Rhea drove back after our dinner at seven o'clock, eight o'clock at night.
You know, I stopped to rest almost as much time as I was two hours of that, five different, a month, five hours.
This guy?
I had to, though. I had something else the next day.
Good morning and welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission in the Board of Supervisors Chambers for October 30th, 2019. Information concerning the following agenda items is available for public consideration during normal working hours at the Resource Management Agency Permit Center, 5961 South Mooney Boulevard, Visalia, California. The staff will assist in answering questions. For further information about the Planning Commission, see the last page. All public hearings are scheduled for certain times or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard. All non-timed items will be considered following the public hearings or when time permits. Persons wishing to speak on any of the agenda items who have made a political contribution of more than $250 to any commissioner in the last 12 months must indicate this when speaking. And we shall move on to roll call this morning.
McAlroy?
Here.
Millies?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Pearson is absent. Aguilar?
Here.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up with the Planning Commission's consideration so that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair, that is me. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. We are being recorded, and that is the reason for stating your name and address. As a courtesy to all of us here this morning, please turn off your electronic devices, i.e. cell telephones. Moving on to item three, approval of the minutes for October 16th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 16th, 2019 as presented. I'll second that motion.
Please vote.
I'm sorry?
There are no results.
The results are posted.
Oh, you got it up there. It wasn't up here, okay. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item four, parcel map, public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless other, anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that be polled for this, for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on each of these items. I'll open this to the public at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment or poll any of these items? And there's item four A, B, four A and B. If not, I will close testimony to the public at this time. I will take each item. Item four A, which is a tentative parcel map number PPM 19-018. Richard Jobe Robertson's Engineering, Donnie Shamley. Categorical consumption and tentative parcel map PPM 19-018 to divide a 24.4 parcel, acre parcel, into two equally sized parcels. Parcel number one and two, 12.2 acres each, with a final map waiver in the AE10 Exclusive Agriculture 10-acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the east side of Road 256, approximately 2.25 miles southeast of the intersection of State Route 190 and Road 252 south of Porterville. Do I have a motion on this item?
I make a motion. To approve a categorical exemption consistent with California SEQA, State SECA Guidelines, Title 14 California Code Regulation, Sections 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 19-018 with a final map waiver.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
The motion passes six yes, zero no. Thank you very much. Moving on to item four B, tentative parcel map number PPM 19-022. Eric Orin, Forrester Weber and Associates. Categorical consumption and tentative parcel map number 19-022 to allow the division of a 7.51 acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel number one is equal to 4.10 acres and parcel number two is equal to 3.41 acres with two exceptions and a final map waiver in the AE20 Exclusive Agriculture 20-acre Minimum Zone. Site is located on the west side of Road 24, approximately .25 miles north of State Route 201, west of Kingsburg. Do I have a motion on this item?
I make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with California SEQA Guidelines and State SECA Guidelines, Title 14 California Code Regulation, Sections 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 19-022 with two exceptions and a final map waiver.
Do I have a second? Motion passes six yes, zero no. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five, public hearing. Item five A, special use permit, final site plan PSP 19-063. Juan Carlos and Maria Ortiz Valencia. Categorical consumption and special use permit to allow a third residence on a 5.0 acre parcel in the AE10 Exclusive Agriculture 10-acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the north side of Avenue 84 between Road 252 and Road 256, southeast of Terabella. And our contact this morning is Mr. Aaron Bach.
Chairman Millies, Commissioners. I'm Aaron Bach, the Planning Director with the Resource Management Agency. And before you today, special use permit 19-063 for Valencia. This is a request for a third residence in the AE10 zone. The applicant's Juan Carlos and Maria Ortiz Valencia. The location is southeast of Terabella on Road Avenue 84 and Road 252. This item was properly noticed and we have not gotten any responses. The vicinity map, you can see that it is south of Terabella in an area that has 10 acre parcels generally. And you can see some of the areas surrounding it are developed with rural residential and agricultural lands. The zoning is AE10 in which this third residence would be allowed with a use permit. Here's a site plan. You can see the third residence and the existing residence. So just as a matter of fact, they did convert a barn and this is code violation. We want to bring them up to code and the residence currently used for family members. So this is just, again, to bring this up to, up to speed here.
Aaron, can we, obviously it already exists, so they went in there. So this is going to give us a chance then to bring it up and then bring it to code as well, I'm sure, with the improvements. Can we limit this to use by family members only because I'd not like to see it turned into a rental?
Yes, we can condition this if it's not conditioned already to be for residence, for family residents only. Yes, actually, Condition 28, occupancy shall be limited to relatives of the property owners.
Okay, perfect.
So with that, I would suggest we open the public hearing.
If there are no other questions at this time, I'll open the hearing to the public for testimony on special use permit site plan number PSP 19-063. Are there any members of the public that would like to come up and speak at this time, either for or against this project?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Yes. If not, I will close testimony this time and I will look for other comments or a motion to approve as recommended by staff.
I make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SECA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 19-063.
Do I have a second?
I suppose I gotta push the button. Okay, there we go.
I'll second.
Please vote. The motion passes six yes, zero no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. This is not showing up over here, is that right?
Your presentation.
Am I in the wrong place? There we go. Got it? Moving on to item five B, tentative subdivision map number TSM 19-001. James G. Shelton, Neil Zerlang Land Surveyor Incorporated. A categorical exemption and tentative subdivision map number TSM 19-001 to subdivide a nine acre parcel, APN 243-310-002, into eight lots within the city of Porterville's Urban Development Boundary, UDB. The southern 3.75 acres are currently zoned M1 Light Manufacturing with the remainder zoned RA43 Rural Residential 43,000 square foot Minimum Zones. The site is located on the north Grand Avenue within the Porterville Urban Development Boundary. And our contact this morning, Mr. Chuck Prisibelski. I can never say that and I'll keep trying.
That's very.
And I'm a Czech, I'm Czechoslovakian, I should know how to do that.
Right?
Good morning, Chuck.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Chuck Prisibelski, Planning Division of Resource Management Agency. As Mr. Millies just explained, this is a tentative subdivision map. It's located on North Grand Avenue within the Porterville UDB. It is adjacent to the city limits, however, it is outside of the sphere of influence. It is designated rural residential in the city general plan and also in the county general plan. As explained, this other 3.75 acres are zoned M1 and the remainder is zoned RA43. As a part of this project, there will be no general plan land use designation change or zone plan amendment. As explained, the southern acres contains existing shops, that's where the M1 zone is. This M1 zone would be considered legal non-conforming use since it already exists prior to the land use changes that were done with the city of Porterville's general plan. So within an urban development boundary, this does not require board action and the action comes directly from the Planning Commission for approval. The project is to subdivide a nine acre portion, a parcel, into eight lots. The southern three lots in the M1 zone will be approximately one and a half acres. Lots four through eight are in the RA43 zone and they're approximately one and a half to one acres each. This project will be constructed to the city of Porterville's development standards with some exceptions, which is the well and septic tanks and the access to North Grand, which I'll explain in a later slide. You can see the project in the northwest corner of the city of Porterville, right adjacent to the city limits, just outside of the boundaries and just to the southeast of the Fry and Kern Canal. This is an aerial photo where you can see the existing shops in the southern portion that is zoned M1 and the remainder of the northern edge of the parcel is, excuse me, is vacant. You can see the city of Porterville, there's a lot of large lot areas to just to the east of the, the project site that were most likely county projects that were annexed into this, into the city. This is the zoning. You can see again, there's M1 zoning in the south and the, the rural residential to the north surrounded by rural residential zoning to the east. I'm sorry, to the west, north and south. This is the city of Porterville's general plan, which is, the light blue is rural residential. This is the actual subdivision map. Some things of note, there is a designated roadway on the east side of the project in this area right here. There is also an easement going west, east to west, 56 foot wide easement right here that to promote east-west circulation, sorry about that. Anyways, you can also see the existing shops in the M1 zone down in the southern area of the property. So the city of Porterville did provide comments to the project. They stated that the M1 zone, even though it's not compatible with their pre-zoning, that because it's a non-conforming use and it's existing, they do not contest this pre-zoning of their, of the property to be M1. They wanted the streets constructed to city standards and destinations as agreed in the settlement agreement between the city of Porterville and, and the county. This was agreed to and incorporated into design of the tentative map by the project, by the applicant. This is, the city of Porterville, initially the, these two actually go together. Initially, the length of the east, the north-south road was approximately 1,000 feet and that needed an exception through the county. The city wanted a east-west circulation stub to basically shorten that road. Once they shortened the road, the stub didn't become 1,000 feet, it ended up becoming less than 600 feet, which conformed to our regulations and the city's regulations. Therefore, by putting in that east-west stub, it canceled these two comments from the city. They also recommended that the access from lot two be taken from the new street that's in the southeast corner. However, it already has access to North Grand, so it didn't fit well with the subdivision map. Septic tanks and water, due to the length of the line that would need to be constructed to actually sitter wa, city water and sewer, the city actually accepted that the septic tanks and well water would be acceptable for this site. And the size of the lots would be one acre or greater would also be acceptable to have septic tanks on the lot. This being said, the city has a letter of support in the agenda packet that supports the project moving forward under the county jurisdiction, including the placement of wells and septic tanks. As such, this would be considered a categorical exemption, the common sense rule, it's within an urban development boundary, surrounded by existing residential units. It'll be constructed to city standards and there's no species of concern or known cultural sensitivity. And with that, the recommendation is to approve the categorical exemption pursuant to the code and approve tentative subdivision map 19-001.
Question?
Yes.
Chuck, I'm looking at the tentative subdivision map, the drawing there from the engineers. What you're talking about, that little stub there is between the M1 and the, our residential, right? That little narrow.
That's correct.
Well, that's going to then require certain design considerations on the property to the west when it's developed, is that correct?
That's correct, to the east and west because there's no east-west road at that point on either side of the property.
Right, okay.
Chuck, is there any way that we can request, but not, you know, we can request the applicant pursue annexation to the city of Porterville?
Do the Chair have an opportunity to talk to the applicant? About process because there's been lots of discussion with the city on this, so they can, he can enlighten us as to those discussions.
I'm not suggesting a requirement, but anyway, we have way too many properties that the county is responsible, especially Porterville, so.
Any other questions, fellow Commissioners? This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the hearing to the public for testimony on tentative subdivision map TSM 19-001. Do you state your name and address? Mr. Zerlang.
Good morning, Chairman Millies, members of the commission. My name is Neil Zerlang. I'm a licensed land surveyor. I am representing the property owner, Mr. Shelton, on this matter and appreciate your time this morning. We do concur with the staff report and the conditions that are contained therein. Mr. Shelton is here this morning and can also respond to, to questions that you may have. With that being said, I'll remain available for questions that you may have. Certainly appreciate your consideration this morning.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come up and speak?
Would.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
James Shelton, 88 North Wilford Drive, Porterville, California. I want to thank Mr. Bach and Prisibelski, I did that better.
You did it.
Prisibelski. Chuck did a great job. The problem that we're, that we're, we're having in Porterville right now is we have these, we've developed a code that really doesn't address pre-existing, it has these wonderful ideas about this utopian world in the future, but, so what happens in situations like this where you have long skinny lots, you just kind of have to make it work. So we've done a pretty good job of doing it. We did discuss annexation and I'm not a big fan of annexation. I don't see what there was much in it for me. I kind of like my county, my county status. And, and the city was, I mean, they would always like to get something, but, but they, they agreed, you know, that this was, probably wasn't a good fit at this time and I imagine down the future, maybe it will be. We don't know what's going to happen out there. But anyway, everybody, it was a, it was a process and everybody wrestled with it and I think it came with a really good plan, probably as best plan as we could come up with, given the shape. I tried to buy adjacent property to re-confer it, but nobody was interested. So anyway, I'll answer any questions if you have any questions, but I'm, I'm a big fan of what we came up with.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Shelton?
That looks like a good, good compromise.
If not, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any, any other members of the public that would like to speak on this project at this time? If not, I will close testimony to the public and I will look for other comments and/or motion to approve as per the staff recommendation.
I still don't like that it's in the county and we have way too many little pieces that we have to provide services to. And so I think, I'm not saying they require him to do it, but they should, we should let the city of Porterville know that they should be annexing pieces like this and we don't need to be making decisions for Porterville, so, as well as having services, so, end of my comment.
Do I have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Sections 15061 B3 and conditionally approve TSM 19-001. I'll second that motion.
The motion passes five yes, one no. Thank you very much.
For your consideration.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on to item six, a continued public hearing. Item six A.
Free dive.
Thank you, thank you. Special use permit number PSP 19-040.
Through the Chair? Staff would request a 10-minute recess at this, a 10-minute recess at this time?
Okay, we'll do that. At this time, we will take a 10-minute recess to 25 minutes till 10. We're reconvening the Tulare County Planning Commission on October 30th, 2019. We're moving on to item six A, continued public hearing. This is a special use permit PSP 19-040, Sunshine Paradise Ranch LLC. Michael Canarosi. Categorical consumption and special use permit PSP 19-040 requests authorization for a guest ranch on a four acre portion of a 44 acre parcel. Guest ranch for maximum 15 guests with no assemblages or commercial weddings allowed in the AF Foothill Agriculture Zone. Site is located on the South Fork Drive approximately 9.5 miles from Three Rivers. And our contact this morning again is Ms. April Hill. Good morning, April.
Good morning, Chairman Millies and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner 3 in the county's Environmental Economic Development and Planning Branch, Project Processing Division. Following the last hearing, we posted a packet on the Planning Commission website on Friday the 25th, included draft conditions of approval and more complete project description addressing local concerns, a letter from Attorney Dennis Villavissencio dated 10/17, right after the last hearing. The county's local agency management program regarding septic systems included lighting standards from the Three Rivers Community Plan, correspondence from Sequoia Kings Canyon National Park, a Google aerial overlaid on the site plan and photos of the teepee tents. Project description posted online. Project description posted online includes descriptions of the applicant's goals, fire safety, lighting, noise, guest limits, site improvements, septic systems, water source, access, and road conditions, traffic, parking, emergency plans, solid waste, food preparation, et cetera, as well as compliance with SEQA zoning, land use, and public noticing requirements. Second packet was emailed yesterday, 10:29. It included a link to a YouTube video of a ride down South Fork Drive. Also included an Environmental Health Services Division email and approval letters of the onsite septic systems. It included the engineered design prepared for those septic systems by consolidated testing laboratories. In the audience are Environmental Health Services Ken Bowers and Ted Martin, if you have questions about septic system approval. Handled out today is a revised draft resolution with revised conditions of approval and five more items of correspondence that we received this morning after some late work by the opponents. Sunshine Paradise Ranch LLC, the owner Ken Willard and the agent Mike Canarosi, request approval of a special use permit to allow a guest ranch on a four-acre portion of a 44-acre parcel. Property is in the AF Foothill Agriculture Zone, and it is outside urban boundaries. A guest ranch may be permitted in the AF zone if the planning commission approves a special use permit. A guest ranch does not need to be in a development corridor or within an urban development boundary. The project has been determined to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. This week, the, on Monday, we met with the agent and the opposition's attorney, and the applicant at that point asked for an increase in the number of rental guests from 15 to 21 to allow the owner to rent his two-bedroom house out when he or his family are not staying there. Number of parking spaces on the site will increase proportionately. The caretaker's residence will not be rented out. Property on South Fork Drive is about nine and a half miles from State Route 198. Through the chair to Mr. Elliott, we contacted the Sequoia Kings Canyon National Park regarding the project on the 17th of October, the day after the, after the commission meeting. Have received no comments, tried three ways. Guest ranch is not considered a short-term rental because the maximum occupancy exceeds 12 persons. Shall be considered for approval by the planning commission. Some of the conditions do mirror those in this draft short-term rental ordinance for consistency's sake. Here's the aerial photograph of the subject property newly created. Thank you, Mr. Vang. It's overlaid on the site plan. A copy was in the packet posted online, and the aerial confirms the agent's measurements of distances from the river. The applicant has agreed to move the teepee tents or places where people sleep at least 50 linear feet from the mean high water level of Coa River. Conditions of approval have been added following Monday's meeting, and they're up to your discretion. Beginning on page 14, county building code compliance inspectors shall inspect the site on a quarterly basis for one year following approval to ensure that conditions of approval are being complied with. Starting on page 16, outdoor lighting is restricted to dark sky standards of the Three Rivers Community Plan. As before, there will be no assemblages of people, no commercial weddings, no amplified music, no amplified live bands. The caretaker's residence, again, will not be used as a vacation rental, but the owner's residence may. The number of adult guests staying overnight is limited to 21. The number of day-use guests is limited to six, same as in the short-term rental ordinance. The day guests are allowed only between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. The existing river well will not be used for the commercial rentals. The applicant shall maintain a log of the number of guests and vehicles at the guest ranch and shall send the planning department a report quarterly for the first year. Similar to the short-term rental ordinance, outdoor fires will be allowed only in November, December, January, and February on air district approved burn days. Outdoor fires shall only be permitted within a designated fire pit that complies with applicable state and local laws, and there are other, other conditions of approval that we pulled from the draft short-term rental ordinance.
April? Read that about the fire pits again?
Only in November, December, January, and February.
And is it like multiple fire pits or just one?
Oh, no, the fire pits, they're not planning.
Pardon?
We're not, we're just saying, has to, any fire pit has to comply with the regulations. Eighteen parking spaces minimum will be provided onsite for the rentals. This is a contour map. Each line is 80 feet apart. The building sites are where the lines are further apart. That indicates more level. As shown in the site photos that we showed last time and are available to see again, buildings are sometimes backed up against steep and rocky slopes. Again, the project has been determined to be categorically exempt from SEQA for Section 15303 regarding new construction or conversion of small structures. This ends staff's report. If you have any questions?
Any comments for April? From my commissioners?
One question of clarification. Sorry, I don't know if this is on her. Sorry. The distance for the teepees of 50 feet, you said, from the mean high watermark, what does that mean? I'm guessing, but I want clarification to be sure.
That was proposed by the opposition's attorney when we were discussing on Monday. So it's a kind of splitting the baby measure, and we thought we had agreement on that one.
Okay, but what is, so I'm not guessing, by county standards, what does mean high watermark mean?
That would be the flow of the river. Actually, you know what? I want the engineer to explain that to you exactly.
We're still, we're still measuring over the edge?
Hi, this is Johnson Vang with Public Works. So the mean high watermark would be, so in this area, the, 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 that, whoa, sorry, what's the? No, it's not, it's not the flow, it's the elevation. So April, do we have an aerial of the, if you go back to that map there? So that, the blue line right that we see there, that's the...
Edge.
Yeah, that's the edge. That's the best.
The little cliff, the drop-off?
Yes, so. So I don't have the right wording for it just yet. So the, yeah, the blue line there represents, so the mean high water level is when we look at the watershed and we calculate the flows, and we have, there are stream gauges out there, and we do, we do have that, USGS, they do have that data. With that, and with elevation, we can, we can determine the, how high the water, the average height that the water flows during a flood event. And so that blue line pretty much tells you that, that height.
Yeah, just clarification. So he's saying the mean, the mean of a flood event, so the mean average.
Because flood events can vary, can vary. So, so flood events, so flood events can average in height, and so the blue line is just the, the average of those heights.
So just for point of clarification, we're still measuring out and down for the 50 feet, or are we measuring to the edge?
To the edge. So these distances here are horizontal distances, not slope distances.
Okay.
Through the chair, clarification on the maximum number. If the owner's on the property, he's living in the house, he's not going to be renting it out, there will be 15 maximum. If the owner is absent and decides to rent it out, there would be 21. So 15 is the normal maximum, 21 if the owner is absent and is renting it out, renting his house out.
On that, April, I have a question, because if the owner is renting out the house and the rest of the property is this guest ranch or dude ranch or whatever you want to call it, is the house of the owner, while it's being rented, subject to short-term rental ordinance?
Through the chair, yes, it would be. Then we're trying to add some conditions on to the AA permit before the AA permits even required, and the applicant's been agreeable to these terms that were suggested by opposition's attorney to actually utilize some of the AA standards, but that's applicable to this project as well.
Okay. Other questions?
I don't like averages because we use in my business weighted averages, and so you may have one year that the flow is, it's a drought year, and it never even gets close. So when you average that in, it, it gives you a false number. So weighted averages, and I think maybe median averages probably are a better choice, but averages don't really work that well, especially.
Through the chair, and that's why this is, just to clarify, this is FEMA flood zone X, so it's outside the flood zone. So it's outside your 100-year flood as far as weighted averages, and the mean high watermark is the, the standard by which we use for all of our state and federal agency permitting as determined by Department of Water Resources, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. But did you have anything to add, Mr. Johnson?
I do, just one point of clarification. So here I have a, just some statistics on the mean annual, the peak flows. So when it comes to determining the, I mean, we look at the stream gauges provided by USGS, and here, for example, we, we have, we can go for two-year, two-year peak floods, five years, 10 years, 25, 50, 100, 200, 500, and it just keeps going up. And essentially, when those, those years, essentially, like in 50 years, it could have a flow of X amount, which would have a certain height. So like when we design Jenny Gilinton and subdivision, then we would design for certain year events. In this case here, so for FEMA, for example, in a flood, we would, for a zone, for zone A, we would say, okay, for 100-year, in 100 years, what are the, what are the chances it'll, there's a percent, a percent chance it'll flood, and elevation will be provided. So really, it's, the average means really just the average precipitation for that year, that 100-year flood. So it's, really, yeah, so that, hopefully that was somewhat clear.
Well, you have to use something, but I'm just saying it still is questionable.
I understand.
All right, sir. You have another comment?
Oh, no, I just want to say that that is the mean high watermark for that river, as ascertained by Department of Water Resources, and, and it's in the flood zone X for FEMA purposes, so well outside of any flooding hazards.
If there are no other questions or comments from my fellow commissioners, I will reopen the hearing to the public for testimony, only on new commentary, not old, new. We've heard quite a bit of commentary from the public, which is great. If there's any new elements to add here, that's what we'd like to hear. Are there any members that would like to come up with something new? How many people? New, new, okay. All right, please, why don't you just form a line over here real quick, and three minutes. Three minutes, timing on this is going to be tight. We want to move through this, so please come up and state your name and address. Well, I'll, I'll determine if it's repetitive, so I'll be judicial here, and, yes, sir?
Good morning, I'm Dr. David Wood, I live at 44828 Mineral King Road in Three Rivers. The Washington Post this morning, October 30th, 11:31, indicates that winds are gusting above Hurricane Force in California, driving a new wildfire in the Los Angeles area. Any further blazes, according to National Weather Service, are likely to exhibit extreme behavior. I'm in opposition to this project because it's at the peak of a very high, narrow, steep canyon. We've already heard testimony at the last hearing about helicopter pilots with combat experience in Afghanistan finding this canyon to be perilous to navigate when they were trying to do interdiction missions. My friend Sal Natale, who's worked for the National Park Service and lives on South Fork, was just sharing with me this last week how a C-140 dumped its fire retardant load as it was progressing up South Fork Canyon during a significant fire event some number of years back, and dumped its fire retardant load before it got to the fire. My neighbors and friends, Paul Smith on South Fork and his wife Nancy, observed a vehicle who was, the driver was unable to negotiate the sharp hairpin turn on a bridge at the, you know, closer, closer to downtown part of South Fork, but still on South Fork, just a week, two weeks ago, excuse me, that vehicle blew its tire and proceeded to drive on the canyon on its rim, you know, showering sparks on the road. You now have a proposal from this project to increase its population by 40%, six more, like from 15 to 21 now. And, you know, there's a discussion from RMA, I believe, about allowing fire pits beginning in November, but this is October 30th, and the better part of California is significantly on fire right now. This is a steep, narrow canyon with a very difficult ability to exit during an emergency, and although RMA has done its job and has done it very well, I think it's the responsibility of the planning commission to plan. And when you plan, you have to anticipate what will happen in the future. And what will happen in the future is a tragedy that will be replicated from, from what we've already seen in other parts of California. And if urban Los Angeles is currently significantly in fire, then what would happen, God help us, with something in, in South Fork? And if Tulare County is dependent upon the tourism revenue for Sequoia National Park, what happens when we have a fire in South Fork, which is not going to respect boundaries, and it will go to Sequoia National Park as well? So you're going to have a loss of life, and a loss of property, and a loss of a significant national and international resource that would be dramatically impaired by further commercial development in the South Fork. This is agricultural foothold.
Thank you very much, your input is well taken. Yes, sir, please state your name and address.
Name's Anthony Ferranti. My address is P.O. Box 1105, Three Rivers, California, 93271. Well, we already heard this morning that they already want to expand how big a business they want to operate, nine and a half miles back on the road. Because I was going to say that, like, looking into the, into the SUP, it looked like there was an ability for them to later come to you folks and try to expand their business. They're already trying to do that. Last time we were here, we heard that the RMA doesn't have the staff or the resources to go around, quote, "looking over fences" to make sure that people that are running businesses, like short-term rentals, will be complying, that it's really incumbent upon us, the residents, the neighbors, to be doing this, I guess, for you guys. If you have a business that far back on their own big giant 44-acre piece of land that they say they're only going to use four acres of, how long is it going to be before they're operating their business and want to continue to expand it and make it larger and larger and larger? We already see evidence of this with the Redwood Ranch that's operating with little to no regard for their impact on our community. So I would ask that you guys not approve this, because as we can see, it's a business that's going to want to continue to get larger in an area that should not be a commercial operation. This is an agricultural area. This is not a place where we need large commercial businesses adding... This is not a place where we need large commercial businesses adding increased traffic on a road that can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Good morning. Karen Bodner, 45495, South Fork Drive, Three Rivers. One of the drawbacks of not going first is that other people tend to say what you had planned to say. So I will just go ahead and make my policy argument. Just because something can be done doesn't mean it should be done. RMA has done a good job of looking at what is reasonable on paper, but we have a reality to look at. We have the reality of the Paradise File, Tubbs Fire, the Kincaid Fire, now the Los Angeles Fire, the Brentwood Fire, this morning, Simi Valley, including the Getty Center and the Reagan Library. All of those places were built within regulations. They were built in something that looked like it would be reasonable to do. But look what's going on. It's the unexpected that planners have to plan for. Fire can be ignited by anything, you know, a rock hitting the underside of a car, or riding on a rim of a tire. All of these things will affect all of us who live in South Fork and in Three Rivers in general. Over the past three hearings, we've presented lots of information and lots of reasons why this is a really bad idea to approve. Frankly, it would be irresponsible not to consider what's actually happening beyond what's on paper. Just because something can be permitted doesn't mean it should be permitted. I strongly approve, strongly oppose approval of this, and I think most of us on South Fork are pleading with you, please don't let this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Debbie Rookstuhl. I live at 45493B, South Fork Drive. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend other hearings, so forgive me if I repeat anything. I have a big concern along with what Karen and what Dave has mentioned, but that South Fork Road is very small, very narrow right now. In fact, 45 years ago, or 50 years ago, when my parents bought this property, it was a one-lane road, and we just put double yellow lines down it. So two small cars go well past each other.
And we haven't heard that testimony, by the way.
All right, I won't say anymore about that. And I'm concerned about evacuation in the case of anything, but mostly of wildfires.
We've heard that also. Thank you, but that's good input.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dean Harbold, and I live on 49032, South Fork Drive. I'm not going to get into how bad the road is up to that point because you all know it, and I'm not going to get into the fire because you've all heard that. But one other thing that bothers me, out of that 40-acre parcel, they're using four acres to start this project. What's to keep them from coming back and wanting 10 more acres into the project and keep it going and going like Redwood Ranch?
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Esther Hacker. I live at 46726, South Fork Drive. I believe it's about two miles south of the proposed site here. I represent not only being a neighbor, but also I am a member of the Three Rivers Fire Safe Board. I know that we've talked about roads, we've talked about fires. I understand, I want to say thank you for what they have looked at and how they are trying to monitor some of the defensible space and addressing outside burning. Those are good things for our environment up there. I am concerned, though, about the evacuation plan, which I don't see in there. If we are going to have 21 people now, 18 possible cars, I believe that doubles the number of people and cars that live in that upper part of the South Fork Ranch when we, after Grous Valley, there are only about that many people up there now. So being a commercial adventure, they do have some added responsibility for addressing, addressing what they are going to do about evacuation. I don't think that's been addressed. They do, it does say that they will shelter in place. All of us residents up there know that as a last resort, we might have to shelter in place. How are they going to do that? Obviously, TPs are not where you would shelter in place. What kind of provisions are they going to take so they can shelter in place on that property with that number of people? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
And those will remain with the commission?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can look them over as I'm speaking, if you would like.
Where'd you get that music? That reminded me of the 60s.
Oh, I'm so glad you saw my video. I was hoping that you had seen it.
I couldn't open the link.
You couldn't. That's why I've included photographs. So with each of your packets.
Through the chair for the record, can the Planning Commissioner state more of what you were witnessing, whether the music was available?
First, give us your name and address for the record. I kind of jumped the gun.
Sure. My name is.
Each other? You know each other?
We know each other.
Is that what the Planning Commissioner said?
I know the family, so. No financial connection. Go ahead, Juliana.
Do I get to retrieve some of my time since there's?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Restart.
Double checking. My name is.
Restart it. Thank you.
My name is Juliana Seligman. I live at 46136, South Fork Drive, Three Rivers, California, 93271. Within each.
Can I interrupt you just one second? I did a view of the video that she produced, and it had some, take me back to the 60s music, and so that's what I saw. Go ahead.
So within each of your packets are seven photos that were taken on South Fork Drive between mile marker 6.5 at Grous Valley Road and the Sunshine Paradise Ranch. For your reference, the vehicle in the photos is six feet wide. Additionally, you will find statements made by Peter Sodi, who is the District Manager of Exeter District Ambulance, Cal Fire Chief Andy Turner, and a brief overview of the Foothill Growth Management Plan. Mr. Sodi states that it takes the ambulance a minimum of 38 minutes to reach the Upper South Fork where the pavement ends, but that is based on a best-case scenario and that ambulance response time can take more than an hour to the area. Mr. Sodi also stated that a helicopter, once dispatched, would take 30 minutes in a best-case scenario. Chief Turner cited a recent fire emergency response to a property nearby Sunshine Paradise Ranch as taking 30 minutes, and a staged fire drill that took 25 minutes and 54 seconds from the fire station where the pavement ends on South Fork Drive, which falls about half a mile short of Sunshine Paradise Ranch. I would like to remind the Planning Commission that the Sunshine Paradise Ranch is in a non-corridor area as defined by the Foothill Growth Management Plan. And I quote, "Non-corridor areas of the foothills represent lands which do not have development potential at this time because of factors such as physical features, lack of access, or service response times. Non-corridor areas are used primarily for livestock grazing, open space, wildlife habitat, watershed protection, and intensive agricultural uses. It is the intent of the FGMP to employ a zoning designation which will ensure that these properties be maintained in agricultural operations and open space uses." Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of quick questions.
Go right ahead.
Just quickly, you show paved road, but your video just showed a dirt road. Where does that dirt road begin and where does it end?
Yes, so the video was taken where the pavement ends, which, to my understanding, is at mile, let's see, I think it's half a mile short of Sunshine Paradise Ranch, so it's at mile nine of South Fork Drive.
So it's about how long?
Through the chair.
That was a half a mile of footage.
Through the chair, just real quickly. I just wanted to make a statement that there was a video produced by this witness that was shown to the Planning Commissioners and to staff, and that we did, as per April Hill, did post it online, or post, not, they gave it to the Planning Commissioners via email. So I just wanted to clarify for the record.
That was already stated, right? Didn't you not say that?
Generally, but we just wanted to give it a little bit more detail.
All right, all right. A little more emphasis?
Detail.
Add emphasis. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please state your name and address, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Attorney Dennis Villa-Vicencio, 45001 Sierra Drive, Three Rivers, California. I have spent quite a bit of time, as you are aware and as the RMA staff is aware, and I appreciate the time and effort that we have all made trying to make this, if not an acceptable project, certainly a better project. But unfortunately, at the end of the day, this is not a project that is acceptable for this place at this time. There is no question that it does not meet the county's standards for purposes of the evacuation. The owner knew when he purchased this property, he knew what the limits were on the development of this property, he knew what the zoning was. All of that was disclosed to him. He had that information. Yet he undertook to try to develop this ranch, and that's a risk that he's willing to undertake. But it's not something that this Planning Commission needs to rubber stamp and approve. That is a risk that he took knowing that it was remote, that it was inaccessible, it was difficult, and that at most he could build two single-family residences on this. However, what he has done essentially here is he has done an end run around the zoning. He's done an end run around the Foothill Growth Management Plan, or he has at least attempted to, in order to do a special use permit, which designates this as now a guest ranch, as opposed to every other short-term vacation rental in Three Rivers or Tulare County. The reality is, this is no different than any other short-term vacation rental. There are no limits on what he can or cannot do with this guest ranch. These guest ranch can be rented out on VRBO, they can be rented for one night or five nights or whatever. You don't have to be in a retreat. None of this is required. At the end of the day, this is really just a distinction without a difference. And this is not something that should be approved by this Planning Commission. For Tulare County residents, this is a poster child for bad development in the wrong place. And following this, as you know, and as the RMA staff knows, is another guest ranch, it's now been termed a guest ranch, Redwood Ranch, which is an even bigger and more dangerous development coming in. And it's just down the road on Upper South Fork. It's interesting that in reviewing all of these documents, the owners of both of these properties go on and talk about how wonderful it is to go up to the mountains where it's quiet and peaceful, and they can enjoy the wildlife and all of this. And yet what they're doing is they're bringing in development that's going to destroy the very thing that they and every person that's here loves about the Upper South Fork. It is your chance, it is your duty to stop this development now. Finally, it's interesting that not only when we were going through trying to put this project together or get these improvements, is it outside the zoning Foothill Growth Management Plan? But just in order to build it where it is, they've had to change the setbacks from the river, whether it's the cabins, it's the tents, the TPs, the toilets.
I'm sorry, we've heard that, and your time is up, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, the chair and the board here. My name is Jeanette Acosta. I live at 43043, South Fork Drive, Three Rivers, 93271. It's an honor and a privilege to stand before you and share my voice today. Thank you very much. I'm a California Traditional Elder, and I'm here representing Santa Rosa Rancheria and has a base in traditional gathering committee. SB 18 requires consultation with California Native American tribes, and I'm here to ask for formal tribal consultation regarding the development of Sunrise Paradise. Protecting the confidentiality of California Native American prehistoric archaeological, cultural, spiritual, and ceremonial places is one of the most important objectives of SB 18. And local governments, such as yourselves, can help assure tribes of continued access and use of these cultural places in addition to aiding in the preservation of a cultural place's integrity, which is Government Code Section 65352.3. AB 52 requires us to contact Native California American tribes about CEQA projects and to consult with tribes as early as possible, and may begin consultation even before a formal proposal is submitted by an applicant or initiated by the local government. Because of the location of the significance of this site, the potential for burials are great, and that there should be protections put in place. Our sites in this area are in need to be mitigated, and there may be NAGPRA issues here. There have been no consultation with local tribes. Monitors need to be required on this site, and they may be out of compliance with CEQA in this regard. There is evidence of archaeological reports, and there are three historical native use reports determining that this area is an archaeological sensitive drainage corridor. Whether or not a tribe has requested consultation, a CEQA document must disclose and analyze whether the proposed project would cause a substantial adverse change of the tribal cultural resource and therefore have a significant impact on the TCR, which is PRC Section 21082.3. We no longer live in the Wild, Wild West. Just because there is no site on record could mean that the site has never been surveyed. This is substantive. The owner and contractor cannot decide whether this is a cultural site or not. They have no onus to report on this. They have widened and graded areas and roads on this property without tribal consultation, surveys, or cultural monitors. They have every motivation to keep this site culturally insignificant. I witnessed heavy haul and backhoes doing work on this property last March, long before anyone knew what was even going on there. Where history can be uncovered with a simple turn of a shovel, it can also be obliterated with a bucket of a backhoe.
Ma'am, I'm going to interrupt you here at this point. Thank you, your three minutes. I'm going to ask counsel and staff, have we looked at this AB 52 as part of this project?
Go ahead.
Through the chair, if I may. Thank you for attending, Mr. Acosta. Appreciate your testimony. SB 18 applies to general plan amendments only. This is not a general plan amendment. AB 52 applies to CEQA only when there is a negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, or an environmental impact report prepared for such. The county has good practice in notifying the Native American tribes through the Native American Heritage Commission when these thresholds are met. As this is not a general plan amendment, SB 18 does not apply. As this is not a negative deck or higher document, AB 52 does not apply.
All right. Thank you very much for that.
I have a question.
Comment.
Both for Hector and for, I'm sorry, I didn't catch her name.
Jeanette Acosta.
Jeanette Acosta. Okay, so Hector, and I'm still learning, so forgive me for asking perceived dumb questions, but what are the circumstances in which there might be a mitigated negative declaration?
A mitigated negative declaration?
Yeah, because I wrote down negative mitigated declaration, mitigated negative.
I'll answer that one. CEQA says we are the lead agency, and as such, we look at, before we even declare something a project or not a project, we look at the CEQA guidelines, and if we decide that it is potentially a project, we move forward to do an initial study, hence ISMD, hence ISND. And once we determine through the initial study process, whether it's an EIR, mitigated negdeck, or negative declaration, we proceed. In a case like this, where we've determined that it is not a project under CEQA worthy of doing an initial study, because there are project features, there are limited potential impacts, then it does not progress to requiring any of the AB standards. But like Hector said, the SB standards only kick in when it's a general plan amendment, and this is a guest ranch conditional use permit, so none of those, none of the legislative regulations. ranch, conditional use permit. So, none of those, none of the legislative requirements apply in this case.
Would AB 52 apply if there were evidence of Native American significance?
If there was substantial evidence presented by anybody, otherwise, yes, it might. But from everything that staff has gathered as lead agency, there is not. And just to make sure, we do have the cultural survey requirements for the guest ranch aspect of this. And I just wanted to clarify one other thing while I have this opportunity. When they did any construction on this site, that was for the building improvements, building permitted structures for the houses outside of this, this project. So, those, those structures wouldn't have, as any of the residences that have been constructed down South Fork would not have required a cultural survey. But all these other aspects of guest ranches, the guest ranches themselves would, guest houses themselves, cabins, would require the cultural analysis. And that is just as a, just catch-all provision, not necessary upfront, but it's a condition that we have added to this project.
Oh, so my question to you, Mr. Acosta, would be, do you have evidence of the significance of this area, or do you have evidence or knowledge that there are artifacts or something of cultural significance to your people?
I do. Unfortunately, it's confidential, but I am willing to share it with the board confidentially, because I can't say publicly where they're located. And I was in touch with Sequoia Kings Canyon National Park, because I am a tribal consultant for them. And it's only last night that they heard about where exactly this was located, and they will be contacting you for further comment, but will require an extension of time.
Who contacted you to make you aware of the...
I'm sorry?
Who contacted you to make you aware of this project?
The community did.
The community? Who, who specifically in the community?
Well, I live on the South Fork, so I go up the...
But who made you aware of this particular?
Through the chair, I don't know if we can ask that question.
We can't. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, are you talking resources on this site that you're wanting to protect?
Well, the, yes, the entire, because it's nine and a half miles upriver, the entrance of Sequoia National Park is only one and a half miles away. And there are significant archaeological sites that have been documented within that area. And so, I'm just asking to have protections in place and formal tribal consultations be in place.
Somewhere, I was reading that a cultural resource survey would be appropriate after the permit was granted. Why don't we do that before?
Again, through the chair, as far as the level of SEQA required, we do not have any evidence of any cultural artifacts on the site as it is. So, again, that's a precautionary thing that we put in as a condition of approval to the project. If there are known artifacts, then that would increase the potential for our, not only our SEQA to go up, but the need to do such a survey before, beforehand. Now, again, this is technically beforehand, not necessarily, there's no requirement ever that we can put on people before they are obligated to do it with an approved project. We don't do pre-surveys for, for any resources, except for, again, what we'll, on the lead agency, and as the environmental persons for the county, we look at that, but not at a survey level. Nothing is required at a survey level, nor can we force anybody to do anything until they have an approved project.
So, let's say a project were, if a project is, question for staff, if a project were approved, and I'm not saying we are, because there's a lot that's been discussed and that we still need to consider, but if a project were approved and there were resources found, then the project would be what?
Well, the project stops at that point, and then they go through the process of documenting it. And then, at that point, the tribe might be consulted and/or the county would put its full measures in place as far as a corner, if there's human remains and/or the artifacts. And then we have the cultural specialists tell us basically what to do at that point. So, until that moment, we wouldn't necessarily do anything except for have a condition of approval on the project that they do a survey.
Well, the, you know, the fact that the grading of the roads and the house pads is already going on out there, seems to me, that's a good time to do the survey. Because if things are going to turn up, you need a qualified person to see that.
Well, and that's the, through the chair, that's the chicken and egg argument. Again, those things that they've been permitted for are things that they would have by right to build a road up to their house. It's not a requirement for all of South Fork, every time they do add a shed or anything else like that to go through the full, whatever it's by right. And again, I do want to also remind this commission that the teepees are not structures, those are tents. So, they could potentially have tents dry camping onsite as well. So, it's really the cabins that make this a guest ranch, per se. So, when we get to that level of construction is when the cultural conditions of approval would really hit. But again, the applicants agreed to do the cultural surveys, but we had already approved the housing permits, because those things are by right.
Well, it just seems that that might head off some of this opposition that we're obviously experiencing here. If, would they be willing to do that?
Do the cultural...
Do a survey without being required?
Well, they, I don't think they want to really move forward to a cultural survey unless they have to with the, but again, that's a question we can ask the applicant at this time. And this hearing is still open, so it's definitely an opportunity to hear from them and what they, they are and what they are not willing to do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address. Good morning.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Good morning, planners. My name is Tim Bailey, Sierra Technical Advisory Group, addressed as PO Box 232, Three Rivers, California, 93271. Speaking today is past Senior Planner at Tulare County RMA, retired U.S. Park Ranger at Sequoia National Park, owner of environmental consulting from Sierra Technical Advisory Group. And to touch on SEQA basically, basic SEQA today from prepared statements, we have substantial evidence which are facts, expert opinion based on facts, reasonable assumptions predicated on facts, and a fair argument does exist in this case, an assertion based on substantial evidence that a project may have significant impact on the environment and/or effect. I would request an initial study, at the very least, a preliminary analysis utilizing what's called Appendix G from SEQA be performed, leading to either mitigated negative declaration or an environmental impact report, full-blown. Based on an assessment performed by my company for the Slugman family of South Fork Drive, I've found impacts, affirmative empirical, significant impacts on nearly every checklist item in SEQA, namely in aesthetics, where we know there's going to be new sources of substantial light or glare. We know under Ag and Forestry Resources, there are currently Williamson Act conflicts, and there will be changes to the existing environment. We know with air quality, there will be potentially cumulatively considerable net increases in criteria pollutants from auto emissions and road dust that we would anticipate with visitation and use of that site. With regards to biological resources, we currently have no baseline other than CNDB reports, California Natural Diversity Database reports that indicate that extant species, i.e. species that are threatened and listed, live adjacent to or very close to that site. With regards to cultural resources, we have no baseline. A study is needed, as was just discussed here. And in the Three Rivers Community Plan Update 2018 Draft EIR, it has been discussed that due to the, despite the absence of documented cultural resources within the project area, i.e. Three Rivers, both inside and outside of the UDB, cultural resources are potentially undiscovered, and significant resources might exist in this area. That's from page 3.1-15, Three Rivers CPU 2018. We know there will be potentially impacts to geology and soils. The USDA Web Soil Survey Analysis Program reveals a perfect score of 1.0 in the Area Soil Index, indicating that septic and leach field uses greatest negative impact potential. I read the report from Tulare County and environmental health, and it's very well put together. We know there'll be impacts to hazard and hazardous materials from exposure to people and structures, to significant risks of loss and injury, from death involving wildfires. We know there'll be impacts on hydrology and water quality under subchecklist items GH and J, placing housing within a 100-year flood hazard area, placing housing within a 100-year flood hazard area that will impede flows and inundation by mud flow. We know there's confliction right now in land use and planning with the Foothill Growth Management Plan. We know there are potentially substantial impacts to noise that will arise from use of this site. There will be a potential inducement to see an increase in population in that area, both with the cumulative impacts going on presently with Redwood, impacts of transportation, tribal cultural resources, public services and fire protection, police, medical response.
And that's about the three minutes, or a little more than three minutes, sir. Thank you. Can I get some comments from staff? What are we, what are we talking about here?
Well, through the chair, and I'll let Hector respond as well. As far as substantial evidence that the person is discussing is related to, basically, expert testimony is usually necessary to make a fair argument in contradiction to any finding by staff. Substantial evidence isn't really to refute the categorical exemption itself, but that there are significant effects in addition to that staff is not considering. Again, usually takes expert testimony. In this case, the witness is not an expert in any of these matters. So, we do appreciate the passion and the sincerity behind the words, but we would generally need expert testimony to make a fair argument that there is substantial evidence to any of those things besides the statements presented. So, again, we do appreciate the testimony, but it doesn't rise necessarily to substantial evidence in regards to fair argument that there are significant effects outside that would not allow us to do a categorical exemption on this. It's basically an exception to an exemption. And so, with that, I'll let Hector Garra.
Hector Garra, Chief Environmental Planner. I used to be Mr. Bailey's supervisor, and for the record, Mr. Bailey was not a senior planner, he was a planner for. Also, for the record, Mr. Bailey served a little over two and a half years, and his role obviously was part of the team membership, which is wonderful. So, with that, I just wanted to clarify what his position was and his length of service. Mr. Bailey, I would, I would say for anyone to be considered a SEQA expert, as a SEQA expert myself with 30 years of SEQA experience, I would say a minimum five years of more complex projects, little by little, because SEQA is complex. You learn the little things first, and then you learn process and procedure, then you get more and more complex, and you get it to the realm of more complex documents. Mr. Bailey did not attain, in my opinion, that threshold of expertise. Again, he was a team member, he did well for us. Now, in regards to, regarding thresholds and significance, I am just curious if Mr. Bailey can tell the planning commission in his own words the difference between substantial and significant?
I would defer to SEQA on that matter. It's very clearly written within the law, and that should go to law. And I would say straight up, I'm not an expert on SEQA, but I'm very well informed with matters of the foothills. I've been living here for 16 and a half years.
If I may continue, Mr. Bailey, please.
Yes, sir.
When you look at the determination of significance, I mean, when we look at SEQA, there's a variety of things we look at. We look at the law, the statutes. Then we look at the guidelines, how do you implement these? Generally, this is what you do. The third thing you look at are obviously court cases, because then the courts will say, that was close, but you're not right, you got to go back and look at it one more time, which is wonderful. Now, one of the things that you look at in determining significant impacts, and I will quote, at Section 15064, at B2, "The threshold of significance, as defined by 150647A, may assist lead agencies in determining whether a project may cause a significant impact." So, we're looking at thresholds of significance at 15064.7. Thresholds of significance says, using the standard, I'm sorry, at 15064.7D, "Using the environmental standards as thresholds of significance promotes consistency in significant determinations and integrates environmental review with other environmental planning and regulation." At 15064.7A says, "A significance, a threshold of significance is an identifiable, quantifiable, qualitative, or performance level of particular environmental effect." Now, one of the things that we obviously rely on are the expertise of agencies such as Tulare County Fire, CAL FIRE, the Environmental Health Department, the Public Works Department. These are experts in their areas of responsibility, and they have told us that when they do these project design features or conditions of approval, and they're executed in good faith and honesty and well, then they should work out really well. Now, if you look at the narrowness of the road, I'm going, no, and no one's going to dispute the narrowness of the road, it is. But, you know, someone has speculated, the stranger's going to come here and, and drive crazy. Well, I may be a stranger there, but if I'm in an unknown road, you have a ravine right here, you got a very narrow road, I don't think I'm going to drive that fast, it would scare me. And I don't think I would do that. They talked about the number of vehicles that are going to go there. They're saying they're going to use a shuttle, .86 cars per day. You know, I don't see the vast amount of, of traffic there. I don't see a fire hazard when CAL FIRE and your common sense would prevail to say, you're going to clear this, you're going to do that. So, there's a lot, I can go on and on and on, is what Mr. Bailey testified to, but I don't see the evidence that we have, we have, we have. I haven't seen it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Garra. That was very helpful. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will take your input as presented. Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Catherine Taft. I live in 46194 South Fork Drive, and also represent the Taft family from 46248 Grouse Valley Road, which is across the river. A lot of the things have already been said. I just wanted to point out that it seems significant that the, one question, the resident building went from a resident to now a rental. And that's kind of interesting, because it was supposedly this person having a home and having guests periodically, to now a full-on rental of everything, including the building that supposedly for the people who live there. The second thing that I just noticed was that the number of cars, they were saying, first it was going to be a group shuttled for a significant type retreat for meditation, and now it's gone to 18 parking spaces for guests. And that's significant traffic going up and down that road, which is not safe, as we've already discussed. And the traffic, now, all of us on the South Fork, we've all chosen to live there, in a rural area, for its rural significance. It's quiet, it's away from the population, it's away from the commercial zones. And, and this whole project is all commercial. Let's get down to it, honestly. It's a commercial endeavor, and it's in a commercial endeavor out in the rural area that impacts the people who've bought property there and live there, and do want a significantly quiet area. All that traffic goes right by my house, and it's all increased. We've had a significant increase with Red, the Red Rock building up there, and all the, they've increased slowly and without permits, they do things. And I notice that a lot of these buildings have, and things have been established when you have not even given the permits. And that kind of bothers me, the fact that they do things without the permit and permission. And sometimes they've even changed things and not done things in compliance. So, it already is, the established thing is already changing, and it doesn't seem to be forthright from the very beginning. And I'm just asking all of you, as a Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the people who live there and who...
We are the Planning Commission, ma'am.
Right, you're Planning Commission. And so, we're asking you to please deny this on behalf of the people who live there and want to live in a rural community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, sir. Good morning. Please state your name and address. You have handouts?
You've received them, sir.
Pardon?
You've received them already. Mr. Loeb's question.
Please state your name and address.
My name is George Loeb. I live at 45793 Cinnamon Canyon Road, Three Rivers, California, 93271. To reiterate, the traffic problem, the state was .81 cars per day. We're now up to 18 vehicle, parking for 18 vehicles. They are now saying, which, that there will be, each individual group will be preparing their own food every day. There's no refrigeration, so where are they storing this food? So, they're going to be making trips to the village market, to wherever their supplier is, every day for food. is, every day for food. Even ice is only going to last a day in an ice chest if there's no refrigeration. So these, this is going to increase the trips with 18 cars, .81 trips per day, that's ridiculous. I'd also like to mention that this is, this is some notes from our CEQA lawyer. "The county cannot rely on a categorical exemption because the project may have cumulative impacts. Recognized in projects which otherwise qualify for a categorical exemption may cause significant adverse environmental impacts under certain circumstances. CEQA contains an exception to a categorical exemption when a project would cause cumulative impacts. CEQA Guidelines number 15300 dot two dot period. CEQA Guideline Section 15300.2 Subdivision B prohibits the use of categorical exemptions when the cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type to the same place over time is significant." The cumulative impact exemption ensures that the project's potential cumulative impacts are not overlooked when a categorical exemption is applied, because environmental damage often occurs incrementally from a small variety of small sources. California, as with direct environmental impact, CEQA requires preparation of EIR when a project impact may be cumulative, be considerable. For example, this started off as a much smaller project, and now we said it's increased by, what, 40% just by adding the initial people to the renters, residents. Cumulative impacts means incremental effects on an individual project are considerable when viewed in connection with the effects of past projects and the effects of other current projects and effects of probable future projects such as Redwood Ranch. This exception to categorical exemption applies if the lead agency is presented with evidence there is a fair argument that cumulative impact exception applied. Contrary to county claims, the potential for cumulative considerable projects is not speculative. Application for at least one other project of cumulative considerable traffic, impact, considerable traffic, safety, noise, fire hazard, water supply, water quality, and land use issues has been received by the county. This is a reasonably foreseeable project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council staff, can we get a commentary from the applicant, or do we want to close public testimony?
It looks like-
You've already been up, sir, I'm sorry. He was up. Was he not up?
No, he hasn't been up.
No, I haven't been up yet.
He was a different project, yeah.
That's right. You were in the last one.
Been this long, let's three more minutes.
Okay.
James Shelton, 88 North Fork Drive, Porterville, California, 93257. First of all, I'd like to note for the record that I have never given the council commissioner $250 or more, probably never will. Second of all, I guess whenever I hear a situation like this, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I do have an issue with the philosophy, and I have this, you know, I think if you own a piece of property, you should be able to do what you want to with your property. And I think that, you know, everybody wants to buy their heaven's little half acre, and I appreciate that. But, but if the neighbor's idea of his heaven's little half acre is different than yours, I have a problem with you wanting to stop him from doing what he wants to do. Now, again, I'm not really for or against this project, but, but what happens is, a lot of these arguments I'm hearing are the same argument that could, that was probably brought forth when their little heaven's half acre was developed, when, when people's residences' houses were built up there. I'm sure the neighbor didn't like that either, but they got it, and then they moved into it, and they're happy now.
Well, sir, what does, what relevance does this have to the applicant?
I just think philosophically that, that-
We've heard a lot of philosophical comments and some specifics, so unless it's different from what we've heard-
I'll move along, I'll move along, Mr. Millie. If there's legitimate concerns, I think they need to be addressed. If it's just a, you know, instance of NIMBY, then, then I think that, that, you know, we just need to say that and not, not try to bandy around all the reasons, because all these reasons that are getting stated are equitable reasons for saying, "Well, then no one should live up there, and maybe everybody should abandon their houses and move down, because obviously it's dangerous for fire, and there's not any access." So that's where I think a little bit of hypocrisy. Thank you.
Thank you. None of us run for office, so we'll never see, we'll never see your $250. We're a body of your peers, that's who we are, we're you, all right? Thank you. Are there any other comments from any members of the public at this time? If not, I will close.
Mr.-
Somebody else?
Yeah, the applicant's rep is standing. Did you want to, I think he wanted to comment.
Where?
Considered part of the public or am I?
Through the chair, yes, you are part of the public, so please come in.
I didn't see you come up.
Yeah, he's, he's back there.
Was he wanting to come, oh, there, okay. Please state your name and address again, sir.
My name is Michael Cannarosi, 42265 North Fork Drive, Three Rivers, California. And I'd like to hand these to you guys, because this has to do with the road itself. I'll get back to that later. Thank you, you want to restart the time? That is a screenshot from a website produced by the same people that produced the road video that we were all introduced to. And my question is, if that road's that dangerous, why are other vacation rental groups encouraging their clients as a day trip to go up that horribly dangerous, fire-ridden road? So, but that's not the main reason I'm standing here, I've got some other things I'd like to address if possible. So whenever you're ready, okay. There's a little bit of confusion about the move from 15 to 21 on the application. Friday, excuse me, Monday of this week, I met with RMH staff and opposition counsel to try and hammer out any differences we had, so we could come to some sort of conclusion for all this. During the process, brought up that with the two houses being built, residential houses on the property, that the owner, when he wasn't there, wanted the same rights as any other owner, he wasn't there to be able to use that as a vacation rental, as governed by Tulare County standards. And it was agreed to at that point that although any other resident in Three Rivers would be able to rent two homes, that the caretaker house would stay always as a caretaker house, and the owner would be able to vacation rental his home if he wasn't there. But that would be a separate operation from a guest ranch. That has a separate septic system, has a separate water system, it's entirely separate. So what we're talking about is the guest ranch itself, that hasn't changed. And I know I'm trying to respond to some comments, there was one made earlier, "What's to keep them from coming back? What keeps them from expanding?" Well, you guys, if there was a request for expansion in the future, I'm not saying there would be, but if there was, they'd have to come to a public hearing, present their arguments, and you guys would be the ultimate determinators of whether or not that was possible. But I wanted, I wanted to address that. There's been other concerns. I think as a, as a board looks at this, that one thing to keep in mind that, you know, do we, is this thing within the AF zoning? And a client's not looking for a zoning change. This is indeed a permitted under the current zoning. There's another thing, is this project compatible with existing land use? And based on the National Park campground, just a mile and a half away, this thing is compatible with what's around it. There have been people going up that way camping for 50 years, so to have tent sites and a couple cabins near the rivers is not incompatible with that use as well. The impact on the immediate neighbors, this is easy, we've only got two neighbors. One of the neighbors is in complete support, you got a, you got a letter to that effect early on this, of Mr. Smith. The other neighbor has expressed concerns concerning sanitation, sewage, food storage, things of that nature, and as you can see, we've addressed those very well. We've got expert septic design, and we've got experts in the county that have approved that. I want to open up to any questions that you guys, you may have for me.
Any questions?
Oh, there's one more issue I wanted to make with the, I want to respond to something Mr. Elliott had spoken earlier about cultural resources. And just to reiterate, we have contracted with a cultural recess resource company out of Bakersfield, and it's quite a few thousand dollars to do this, so that's why that it wouldn't be done in advance. Any approval that may be given would be given conditionally, that this cultural survey would be done, and I spoke with them, just to let you know how it works. We would identify each area of soil disturbance. They come in actually with shovels, they start digging around there and within 100-foot radius of that proposed dis serve site. Cultural resource specialists said, "Now, I got to tell you now, if we find something, we're obligated to contact the local tribe that is associated with this area, and we'll have to consult with them to come up with any mitigating nature." So, that's how that works. Yep, it'll all be done. As far as the digging that was already done, the building permits, residential building permit for the caretaker cabin that was, was issued like any other citizen in Three Rivers, residential building permit is not required to do this, this type of thing. But we all keep our eyes open, we know what's up, you know, we know the potential, and it-
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I don't know if these are questions for the applicant or for staff, but I'm curious about how many residences are between this proposed site and the park, and then how many are between this site and the area of which it becomes one lane?
Not a lot. Well, the one lane, I'd like to speak to that, if you would. The one lane, it isn't as if this thing is a one-lane road. It varies. There are certain places of it, just like with Mineral King Road, or actually some of the paved parts of Lower South Fork, when you see somebody coming, you kind of move to one side.
Officially one lane, or does it go 1-2, 1-2, 1-2, or is it-
That's what you've been on, have you ever driven up to Mineral King?
I have not, Mineral King, not that far now.
Okay. Well, Balch Park Road, some of, or when you get onto these, you see some places you pass very nicely, and other places, people get spooked, and they still pass, but they're a little nervous about it. And there are other places where they come and they look at each other, and somebody backs up to the next turnout, and then you pass each other. And that's just common mountain practice that's been going on here since they had horses and buggies. And the right-of-way is given to the downhill traffic. You have to back, or the uphill traffic has a right-of-way, you have to back, if you have to back, you back uphill. That's-
Thank you very much.
One thing I would add about compatible uses, there are accounted seven vacation rentals on South Fork right now. And I haven't done a whole lot of research, I know of seven short-term rentals on that road. And if the, if the client weren't trying to have a guest ranch where he limited to 15 people, two homes, permitted homes on that property would be, have a maximum of actually 28 people, as proposed by Tulare County, as in simply a short-term rental arrangement, and not have to go through any of the planning commission or the, the big permit process. So, actually, we're proposing less than what is permitted in other parts of town.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, do you have something that's different?
I just wanted to comment.
Please, is it different from what we've heard so far?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Kathleen Seligman, and I live at 46136 South Fork Drive. I would first like just to comment to Mr. Cannarosi's, two of his comments. One is, I, in terms of backing up on South Fork, I was speaking with the UPS driver that drives all the way up there, on a, at least on a weekly basis, and he made a comment that it's really unbelievable when you get into the area where you have to back up. And he said, "When you have out-of-towners," which he says are quite consistent on a Friday, when the activity up there starts getting very heavy, that no matter whether it is the best thing for him to back up or them to back up, when it comes to out-of-towners, they will not back up. And he says, "Guys, don't you realize I've got a truck that I'm now going to be backing up downhill, because you refuse to, you're scared to death, clearly." That's one comment. The other thing is in regards to the comments that are, that Mr. Cannarosi and other people during this period of time have spoken to it about the campgrounds, and I would like to say that the campgrounds are, have federal oversight, and the commercial developments here are, don't, they have county oversight, and there's a big difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are no other comments at this time, I will close testimony to the public. And Mr. Bach?
Yes, through the chair, if I could have somebody from Environmental Health come up and just quickly, as part of our presentation and closing comments, speak to the septic design, because I know, I do want to put this in the record, we do have CTL's report, and we do have an email from Environmental Health, but I do would like them, for you to hear, and for the record, exactly their, their view of the septic design on site.
All right.
Can I have a couple of questions also?
You want to do this, and then we'll do you? Or do you want to go? You want to go now?
Mine is real easy.
Go ahead.
One is, what is the definition of assemblage of people?
Through the chair, you've had several assemblage of persons ordinance cases come before you as far as a special use permit. Assemblages of persons allows 12 events per year, and as far as the personage and the conditions that go along with it, as far as 300-foot buffers for sound, and the Lions Club case was assemblages of persons case, where we did get into, they did have a use permit, and we were reconditioning it for amplified music. So those are your typical assemblages, some, the party bar and cases we've had as well. So where they're having events for 12 times a year. Otherwise, it would be a temporary permit for four times a year.
So the, the fact that people are getting together is not under that?
Just in general, those are for commercial events, for assemblages, and if you have a party for a family member or a non-commercial event, some of the religious events would not fall necessarily under the assemblages ordinance.
And then the other question is regarding the Mrs. Acosta, what, is there room for her evidence to be provided that she says she has?
It's unfortunate, but this was the closing of the public hearing as far as the evidence that would be entered into the record at this time for CEQA purposes. Again, without that evidence in place, there is no substantive evidence to, for staff or the planning commission to view upon, except for the testimony presented. So, no, no, there's not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So, would you like to have your person come up? Mr. Bach?
Through the chair, this is not my person, it's your person too. This is a county representative from Environmental Health.
I know that.
He will testify as to his name and his status and rank, working for the county.
Very good. Please state your name and address.
Good morning, I'm Ted Martin from Environmental Health. And I did my review of the septic systems back in March of this year, and I completed the approval in June after the project review committee meeting. the approval in June after the project review committee meeting. My approval letters are in the record here as well as my email correspondence with Ms. Hill. And I can address any questions at this time about the review or the approval of the designs.
No, it's, it's an engineered system and so it follows the rules.
Any questions other than that? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there other comments, my fellow commissioners, at this time?
I think there was one additional.
So I just wanted to clarify some things that we did go over with opposing counsel as far as to some of the, I don't like to use the term "term," terms that were agreed to by the applicant that staff wouldn't necessarily have recommended of our own volition. One was that we were going to set back the teepees, the tents 50 feet from the high watermark as a concession point because we do not believe they are structures. Originally at the project review committee, I had suggested that they put them on podiums just so they would not be touching the ground at all. But whether they're touching the ground or not, they are not structures. So because of the elevation and because of where they were placed at the time, they should not have affected the waterway at all. But to concede to move them 50 back, 50 feet back further is quite a concession. They were doing a concession in the first place to even put the podiums out there. As far as the location of the bathrooms, as we discussed before, the reason for that setback, in a large degree, the 100-foot setback, was to make sure that there was no septic systems in place. Those septic systems are 300 feet away. And from all of our discussions and from Environmental Health themselves, there is little to no possibility that sewage would run up back to that bathroom and go anywhere near the waterway. Again, those bathrooms are still 90 feet setback from the high watermark. And there is a cliff, a couple of cliffs involved in there. So the realities of that exception they were requesting is that there are no structures within that 100 feet except for the bathroom. And that in and of itself is 90, 90 feet away with all the septic aspects, lead fields, et cetera, moving towards 300 feet. As far as, one thing we agreed to was that we would do quarterly inspections on this site to make sure that they are staying within the parameters of the conditions. So we added that condition that we would do inspection every three months. The other thing is that they would log the residences, or not residences, the users of the site, so they would keep us informed as to how many people are going out there. So if we get any complaints, we can see how they measure up against each other. And then on a quarterly basis, we would go out there and verify ourselves. That would also include the first quarterly inspection, which would, at that point, see if the tents were, and we'll measure, 50 feet horizontally, I mean vertically, horizontally back from the mean high watermark. In addition, we had, and I just wanted to clarify this and we might get some further clarification on this. They, as Mr. Canarozy had just said, would necessarily, when the STR ordinance does get approved, or does not, be able to put those people in there, in those houses that they're going to build by right as a short-term rental. So the numbers, we are actually, I mean, it's a little disingenuous for anybody to say that they're growing the project. The project already has that and it's not the project. Their, their short-term rental capabilities are outside of this guest ranch project. But now, they are through their own, I hate to even use the word voluntary, through our advice and through our own police powers, we are forcing them to put those short-term rentals into this permit and basically limiting themselves. So that was a concession that was made. We didn't necessarily want to do that because we do believe short-term rentals, people have a right to rent out their, their properties, so. But, you know, we are a property rights county. We do believe in the Constitution of the United States and we don't like to overencumber people's projects. But we do use our police powers to a very high degree. We get these use permits and so we have done that. And I did want to address the AF issue as well. The AF does allow this use with a use permit. And like I've said many times before, once we do use permits, it's like saying this is consistent with the underlying agricultural use. We have asphalt batch plants allowed in the RVLP as we've approved before. We have large-scale cold storage facilities allowed in the RVLP on agricultural land, some of it in the Williamson Act. So the uniform rules allow for this and to say this is full sale, commercial usage is a little disingenuous as well as this is not a retail store or warehousing or anything else like that. The, the level of difference between building four homes out here and, which someday the state may force upon us, versus two, again, is not solely, totally inconsistent with the agricultural use. And I, again, tents or teepees does not make a difference. Finally, so is that consistent with the FGMP? Does this require it to be in a development corridor? No. Development corridors are, were, through, many, many years ago, were created to allow for certain developments, but we have PDFM zones outside of development corridors which would allow full sale, commercial, industrial development, not necessarily in development corridor, it just makes it easier through our general plan. Again, this is not commercial in nature, so we allow this with a use permit to be consistent with the underlying agricultural land. With that, the last, the last aspect of this, and I would hope Mr. Washam could come up and talk a little bit about how we are looking at this under the STR ordinance.
Mike Washam, Associate Director RMA. Yeah, I'd just like to touch on a few, kind of clarify a few of the comments and then we can open up a discussion if you want to about the short-term rentals. But first of all, at the beginning, there was a comment that the RMA is not making these, enough fire restrictions. The fire department reviews these projects. The fire department places the restrictions that they seem appropriate on these projects. And the, the fire department has recently revised their proposed restrictions regarding short-term rentals. And so to keep everything as simple and basic as possible, we applied those to this entire project as well, the same requirements, which limit the, the months that there is even allowed, if allowed. And then they also have to check to burn with the air quality. So there's, there's significant restrictions on the fire aspect. But again, that was not the RMA, that, we leave that to the experts, the fire department themselves, and they're the ones that place those conditions. Again, this is what's to keep from expanding further. We met in good faith on Monday to try to come to an arrangement. There was concessions made on, on both sides actually. And, and then the result is, the result is the letter we received this morning. But with that said, in the, in the effort of transparency, that's why I recommended that you include those by-right houses into this project, overall project description. We don't want to have, have it come back later when they build a house, if they build a house. We don't even, there's no building permits yet for the second residence up there. It's by right and the, my understanding is the owner is planning to build a house there, but that hasn't happened yet. So if that happens, this already accounts for that within the numbers. And when the developer, or the owner is present, it's 15 is the cap if, of people overnight guests, which is what we've been talking the whole way. If they choose to, if they're not on the premises and, and they choose to rent out their house, their house would be potentially six or eight additional people. So then that bumps, that bumps it up, or six people, that bumps it up to 21. That's where we got the 21. But we want to be transparent and that's why we want to show this is the maximum. Anything beyond that is going to require coming back to the planning commission to do further investigation and approvals. Also, they restricted the caretaker's facility to, they cannot rent out the caretaker's facility. So to again, clarify a little bit more, that if this project wasn't here or being proposed, the caretaker facility could be rented out as well as their house could be rented out. And that totals, actually, it would total 14 people overnight guests, where, by right, without having to come here, we're talking 15 plus potentially the, the other house. And that could also allow six guests there on either property. I believe that's where he got his 26 number as far as what he said would be allowed onsite, not 26 overnight guests. The guests would be limited to 14 if you had two houses and with overnight guests. So just to clarify on that, I, I think the planning director went well through the AF zoning because this is allowed, this type of guest ranch is allowed under zoning and it fits into those plans. This is no end-around. They've gone through here, the only things that have been put on the, on the grounds facilities is the permitted house, which they came and got permits for. The structures, the teepees, don't require a building permit because they're not structures. So oftentimes, this planning commission sees a project that's been operating or done in violation and they're coming in here to get, get it, get it fixed. This project hasn't proceeded yet. What, the, the development onsite is by right for a house and they can build another house. And so they, they are following the rules. They're not doing an end-around, so to speak, is what was mentioned by the attorney. And we have many conditions in here too, above and beyond. As far as the tribal consultation too, they, if approved, if you should approve the project, then, then they will be required to have the, the cultural consultant do a survey. So that is required, that's part of our condition of approval, should it be approved. If there's no project, there won't be a consultation. And I believe that Mrs. Acosta mentioned that, when she said, there was not any specifics, site-specific evidence that there's a region in the area. Yes, the mountains in that, that drainage has potential, but that doesn't mean that there's anything site-specific, nothing was identified. And again, Mr. Bailey talked about expert opinions, that what, what was presented to your board through these emails, video and all of that is expert opinion. It's not expert opinion. The expert opinions are the fire department who was consulted, placed their conditions. The road department who analyzes and sees whether the impact to the road is significant enough that would require off-site improvements. It's the public works department. So it's all of the environmental health and the review of the septic system. So these are the experts in their field, not just citizens that live nearby presenting that. So as far as, that's all I have, just to kind of touch base on that. And if there was a question, was there a specific that you were leaning towards about short-term rentals?
No, I think you answered that very well as far as why we added, added conditions to this project and why we're limiting them versus just letting them come in later with their STRs and getting the complaints then.
I, I will say as far as STR goes though, the proposal is up to two houses on a, on a parcel, the maximum. Anything beyond that or any, anything else or other living arrangements other than normal construction like trailers or tents or, or yurts or whatever, that again, in the short-term rental means you have to come here for a full use permit to be approved for, for those, those types of accommodations, if approved, so.
Okay, I have a question. On Monday, you had a meeting with both sides?
We had the meeting with the applicant and the, the attorney representing some of the opposition.
Okay, so my, in that discussion, okay, we came out with a set of conditions to approve this. Are there conditions that are either in here or not in here that could be acceptable to that attorney?
Well, I, the, the tail end of the meeting was that, that obviously the attorney has a right, obligation to report back to his clients and, and they choose to accept or not. We acted on good faith that this was acceptable because most of those conditions were identified in a letter to us saying, if you, these are the minimum requirements for us to drop our opposition. We met, we fulfilled, I believe, most of those, if not all, with the exception of the septic. We talked about the septic design and the engineering and, and we provided more information regarding the septic. We added and revised conditions based on those discussions on Mondays. So those are now included in the project to what was, was at that time seemed to be what was acceptable to the, to the opposition's attorney.
Yes, and through, through the chair, I mean, they were going to go back to their parties. And when the applicant went back to their party, there was a few suggested changes, but not many. But when the opposition's attorney went back to their party, we got this letter instead and we got some more comments about the FGMP. But regardless of that, I, I would suggest that the only difference in the discussion so far, we're trying to bring the STR aspect into this project. And I know that might be a cause for concern for the opposition, but again, as we've stated many times in the record today, and as Mr. Washington just stated, they would be allowed to have quite a few more cars and persons on this property just through the STR ordinance alone. So I, to me, it's a little disingenuous to come back and say the county's trying to help here and then turn around and just say, no. So I, I don't believe there's any, we've done many negotiations over the last, at least the last six years since I've been sitting here. And you get a sense of when, when things are going to happen or not happen. In my sense at this point is that I don't know if there's room for agreement on, on this matter. But we, we were, I thought we were close. So that's, that's unfortunate. But the last thing I would suggest to the planning commission after hearing all this testimony and even from the applicant's own mouth is to lock this thing in place to make sure it comes back to the planning commission that no minor modifications are allowed on this project. That would be my only added condition at this time.
Okay.
Just to, to clarify, for those in the audience, what that means is, is that any modifications at all to, to this project would require coming back for a full public hearing before the planning commission.
Close the hearing. Of course. Okay. It's the, it's the first one. Any other questions?
Can we still ask a question of the opposition attorney? Is that appropriate?
You'd open the public hearing again and limit it to people who want to talk, as shown in the audience at this time, and then close it again.
I've heard everything I need to hear.
But if you could, in all fairness, since we are very liberal when it comes to our hearings.
So who, you're talking about the attorney?
Well, I, I think there's two hands raised. If we limit it to the two hands raised at this time.
If you do, you have to give me a senior citizen break.
So we'll take a...
I, I would, I would suggest a senior citizen break.
We'll take a, we'll take an eight-minute break and resume at 11:25. We are reconvening the Tulare County Planning Commission for October 30th. We are on item 6A, special use permit PSP 19-040 Sunshine Paradise Ranch LLC, Michael And I'm going to, for two specific individuals, there was a lady up here a moment ago, is she still up here? Two, two specifics, the attorney for the opposition and one other lady that was there, she's no longer there, so I will only allow the...
Was that just a gentleman?
Was it, oh, was it the gentleman? Let's have a senior moment here, okay. And the gentleman, two, please come up and state your name and address. And the gentleman, please come up and state your name and address.
I'm the past chair of the Tulare County Mental Health Board, and the current chair of the Advisory Council for the Kings Tulare Area Agency on Aging. I have recruited Native American representation on the mental health board, I've recruited Native American representation on the Advisory Council for the Kings Tulare Area Agency on Aging. I attend the elders council regularly at the Tulie River Reservation. I am married to a Jewish person, who is a member of a family of Holocaust survivors, the only other group that we would acknowledge in this community typically are Armenians, who are victims also of Holocaust, and then our Native American brothers and sisters, who have survived an horrific, catastrophic, post-traumatic stress disorder genocide. And we now talk about disingenuous, and I find it astonishingly disingenuous that we would dismiss the concerns of our Native American brothers and sisters, who are very much involved in protecting their heritage and their cultural artifacts, and I see absolutely no reason why this project should proceed absent our Native American brothers and sisters having an opportunity to protect and defend their culture before it's ravaged and irretrievably damaged. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, please state your name and address again.
My name is Dennis V. Asensio. I'm an attorney, my address, my business address is four five zero zero one Sierra Drive, Three Rivers, California, nine three two seven one. I take issue with the comments that my attendance and subsequent correspondence was disingenuous. I went in, on behalf of my clients, to Monday's meeting, that's been referenced multiple times here, with absolute, the best of faith and intentions, and that is exactly what we did. We sat down for almost three hours and discussed these issues. However, at no point did I say that, following the, this discussion, that my clients were going to sign off and agree to this project. What I said very clearly, from the outset, and have said all along, is that my clients are not in favor of this. However, I will do everything I can to try to make this a better and more acceptable project, not only to them, but to everyone else. So, I, I've been very clear with, with both the Planning Commission, RMA staff, and everyone else, that that is what I am doing. And we did, I think all of us made a good faith effort, me, the representative for the agent, as well. There are a couple of things, though, that came up, that RMA staff knows absolutely was unacceptable. First of all, whereas this started off as a project of just fifteen people at a guest ranch, call it what you want, it became much more than that when the owner's representative said, well, we also want the opportunity to be able to short-term vacation rental the house. Wait a second here, if you look through the correspondence that was sent by the owner originally, it was all about coming up here, having a house for him, bringing in the media, you know, bringing in people for retreat, and really what it is now, is the opportunity for him to have a business write-off for his second home. And I told them that, I said, this is clearly a much greater commercial endeavor, and you could call it what you want, and you could try and tell me that this isn't commerce, but I can tell you, from thirteen years of running hotels, that it's commerce. Bringing people in as tourists, and renting them rooms, TPs, whatever you want to call it, a structure or not a structure, is flat-out commerce, and this is a commercial venture, and it is a commercial venture in the wildland. So, I told them very clearly that this was not acceptable now, to expand the scope of this. I also told them that regarding the traffic and car pulling and the number of spaces was completely unacceptable. Having eighteen spaces, plus three spaces for the caretaker, is only inviting the traffic, the cars, people coming in and driving themselves separately, rather than what this project was originally sold as, and what is in the special use permit application as, we're going to pick these people up at the airport, and we're going to bring them from foreign countries and from all over, and it's a retreat, and it's going to have very low impact, and we're going to have point eight-six visits per day, going up and down the road. That's not what, that's not what this has been fleshed out to be. This is a much different animal than was sold, or attempted to be sold to you, and it just keeps shifting, how it's going to be, what it's going to be, well, we can, at the end of the day, though, this is not an acceptable project. So, I will leave it at that, and I have no more to say.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Are there a set of conditions, and if we, let's say theoretically, we could go back to that fifteen, is that acceptable to you? And to the, this, we obviously have a concerted amount of opposition here.
And I don't represent everybody here, I have been...
But is that acceptable to you? Are there conditions we could come up with, or is this just a flat-out no?
I think, for me personally, or for my clients, you would have to ask my clients for them, but for me personally, I think if all you had was a limit of fifteen, not including six additional gay, day-use people, I don't know why you would have day-use people if you're selling lodging, but that, again, is, that's beyond my, it's not my business plan, it's their business plan, and the vacation rentals and all this, to me personally, fifteen is a whole lot better, fifteen people flat, than fifteen plus eight in the house, plus...
Six.
So, I'll leave it at that, I hope I answered your question.
So, would it be suggested that this house not be allowed to have a short-term rental AA application approved for their short-term rental?
I would, if they, if they want to come in here, and ask for a special use permit to run a guest ranch, then I don't think it's asking too much for this Planning Commission to tell them to give up those rights to rent their single-family residence, or second single-family residence, as a short-term vacation rental. I think that would be perfectly appropriate, because they're, they're asking for this, and the guest ranch, and they also want this. Yeah? So, that's, that's my, that's my position, I think my clients would back that.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll close the public testimony at this time.
Through the chair, did you want to give the applicant a chance to rebut anything that was heard?
I've closed it, I'll reopen it if you think that's appropriate.
I would think that would be appropriate.
All right, I'll reopen it for the applicant, and I will give you a few minutes. Please state your name and address.
Michael Cannarozzi, four-two-two-six-five North Fork Drive, Three Rivers, California. The fifteen-person guest ranch, because the board had asked, and the RMA, that the guest ranch be limited to the four and a half acres, or, excuse me, four acres, the owner didn't want to give up his rights to do what he wanted with the rest of his property, and we think these are two separate issues altogether. As far as eighteen spaces, total parking spaces, I want to address that, there's really three of those eighteen on a different part of the property, if you looked at the lay of the land, the four acres down here, the residents up here, three of those spaces are up at the owner's residence, but they just wanted to include all eighteen parking spaces on the, so there wouldn't be any.
Okay, well, here we have a set of circumstances, where we could probably make the best decision we could ever make, and that decision is, you won't like it, and they won't like it. And what I see is, right here in the middle, would you be agreeable to hold it to the fifteen?
Well, what the owner already agreed during our Monday meeting, was that by right, with the two houses, he could vacation rent two houses on the property. He agreed Monday to give up rights to rent one of those homes altogether, totally reserve it out. So, as far as they're concerned, they have given up half their rights as short-term rental by right in Tulare County. So, they already have, they've given up, he had a chance to rent two, and, you know, in good faith, will give up one of those to make sure. Now, the fifteen-person guest ranch is different than the residential house, and I think they're being grouped together where they really shouldn't be. So, he has given up a whole house for the opportunity of renting, I think that's been a pretty good concession, given up fifty percent of his opportunity to rent private residences is authorized in Tulare County. But now you want him to give up both, both residences, so I think that's a little much to ask of him, but we'll see what you guys come up with.
Is that it?
Well, yeah, for, for the applicant, that's fine.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll close the public testimony at this time, and I will look for a motion or comment. You want comments?
I have a question for staff.
All right. Comment?
Question first, might be easier.
I'd just like to comment that I'm probably historically the best mix of an American
you get, I have a little bit of all the different ethnicities you talked about, so, but I didn't see that the staff was abandoning the issue of Native American artifacts, it's going to have to be done before they complete the process of the use permit, correct me if I'm wrong.
Through the chair, if I may, what we were responding to was the specifics to SB eighteen, which is a general plan amendment, doesn't apply here, and AB fifty-two, with its mandatory tribal consultation, if a sequel document is a negative deck, mitigated negative deck, or environmental impact report, that's all we, that's all we were...
But what's the deal with the...
Through the chair, yes, to answer your question, yes, they're going to do cultural surveys on the site, as soon as the project's approved.
That's right, so it's, it's all part of the project, correct?
Correct, those are project features.
They'll be held feet to the fire to do that, is that correct?
They will absolutely be held with their feet to the fire to do that.
Okay, thank you.
At the end of last meeting, too, we talked about the possibility of looking into doing road improvements, is that it?
Just going, yes, that is a condition of approval, that they do the cultural surveys, did you have anything to add, April?
The last three conditions of approval are to, if there's anything found, report, any human remains, report, shall avoid and minimize any impacts, inadvertent discovery clause in any construction contract to cease...
Yeah, we're okay with that.
Yes, so, we did, to answer Commissioner Elliott's question, we did look into what public works would want to do out there, and they did not want to be actually beholden to, if they were to get paid to actually do those improvements, because they don't think the amount of money, or the construction that would come off this project, would really fix the solution over the long term, so it was going to hurt them more than, than help them in this case.
Just to add to your staff, the, our co-compliance and our local government is very available, so if something's non-compliant, you can call co-compliance, if they don't respond, we meet twice a month, you come in the public testimony, and we do hear what you say, we're all private citizens, and so I think our local government responds well, maybe not as quick as you want, but good luck to get your congressman to respond, so...
Through the chair on that, it's better to get projects into permits where we have conditions versus not having conditions, and that's why part of the violation process to get, is to get them into permits, because on a lot of these issues, our actual ordinance is silent, including noise, so this is an opportunity to make them, put their feet to the fire, and those are things that we can enforce against them.
Okay, so, I've been going back and forth, thinking about a number of different things on this case, and so I'm talking now to get a few things on the record. As I've said before, very early on, I have ranching family in my blood, and these are people that you don't tell what to do with their property, because then you're met with, you know, defensive property concerns and statements. At the same time, in most recently, I have friends in, in the fire service of a couple of different agencies, and just this last weekend, I was at a training for county planning commissioners, in which we had two chiefs present, and who are also incident commanders for the wider region, and one of the things that just has been sticking in my mind since then, is the, a video they played of a fire engineer, and preface to that, I'm going to say that firemen and firewomen, if that's a word, are some of the bravest people I know, because they're going to put their lives sometimes at risk to protect us and everybody around us, and maybe sometimes we don't deserve that, but I'm listening to this engineer say, I can't back up, I can't back up, and I hear the panic in his voice in the midst of all this smoke, on a very narrow road in the Paradise area. And I'm listening to one of the chiefs say that, and this is a gentleman who was a Medal of Valor winner, if you want to call it winning for that, but he's saying that there are going to be times when we can't help you. And so I'm thinking about, what are the best possible conditions we can have to make this a win-win situation, where we don't put our neighbors, or our fire people, or others at risk? And I'm thinking of the differences between living, I don't know how many miles up, a narrow road that's, has steep drop-offs, and living in flat grasslands, where, I live in Dinu, but it's flat earth, I mean, there's nothing, there's no mountains right there, D hill doesn't really count. And I'm thinking that at some point, and not specifically now for this issue, we're going to need to revisit regulations and how they're applied, because you can't, nobody can tell me, or convince me, at least not right now, that conditions for approval of a project on flat land should be treated the same as conditions for approval of a steep mountain hill with drop-offs and other liabilities. But in the back of my mind, again, as I'm voting today, I'm thinking of a terrified fire engineer on a very steep road saying, I can't back up, and I can't help these people. And that, that kind of broke me. So, there's things that we may not be able to control if this project does go forward, or if it, you know, if it doesn't, what may come after that, but I tend to think that what I heard from two chiefs, and what I heard from their expert opinion, is going to color my decision today. Taking everything else into account, I can't, I'm going to have a hard time putting a regulation, to approve something just because it's possible, versus whether we should, what I have to say.
Can I help you clarify something? We have the chief of CAL FIRE, the state of California, we have the fire chief from Paradise, and who's also associated with CAL FIRE, and that's the people she's referring to.
Yeah, I didn't want to put, blast them, put them on blast, but yeah, that's...
They were, it was impressive.
They couldn't back up also, because there were other vehicles behind them.
And that was in smoky, dark conditions, where we're talking, what were these pictures that we're seeing, our best-case scenario, where clear as sky. And, and to the earlier comment, for one of the commentators, I think it was Mrs. Seligman, we're able to work with our sphere of influence, which is county property, not the federal land, so there's a lot to think about.
You know, the Paradise fire was so intense, and they had satellite views, in less than an hour, it engulfed the whole area. I mean, what a firestorm, it was a perfect storm, but I'm still thinking about that, Maria, that was, that's a good point.
I think it's important, too, for us to find something, where we all have to give something here, and I, as much as the opposition favors, don't do this at all, I think I could buy off on the fifteen limit, but I don't think I could support anything beyond that, because that's supposed to be opening salvo in this, and I'm still not sure why it changed... that's supposed to be the opening salvo in this, and I'm still not sure why it changed, but maybe it shouldn't.
I mean, it's, I heard Mr. Connerosi say that, you know, and I quote, "The owner didn't want to give up his rights to do what he wanted with the rest of the property." I mean, I'm in that hearing, this bill balloon going...
I have a question for our chair because he worked for a large computer company. I can see a reason if you have a, what do you call them, the come together, but you have people coming in the day to train. And so I can see that's the reason why maybe you have two people come during the day but would not spend the night because they're part of this retreat. That's what I was trying to think of.
Well, the way it's worded in the short-term rental is that you can have guests over to your place when you're renting a place, so you can have those people. Theoretically, they're supposed to leave at 10 o'clock at night.
But in retreats, like this is a corporate retreat, they would have people come during the day that didn't spend the night, so I think.
That's possible.
I think that would be a reason.
That's possible.
Through the chair, just to clarify some points that were made. When making a decision, we would hope you'd look in light of the total record before you. So I think there was testimony on all sides on the fire issue, including from our own fire department, as Mr. Washam stated. It is in your power to restrict it further if you wanted to condition it that way, 215. And the, there is the appeal process if the applicant did not want to do that. But as far as the guests were limited to how many on-site?
Six.
Six during the day. So, yes, staff, the way staff looks at it, it's as two different projects. We took a back step and, you know, that wasn't necessarily part of the record previously, but it is part of the record now that those short-term rentals, we did try to condition those before we even have a short-term rental ordinance. So I think staff's done everything in its power to limit the impacts of this project to the neighbors, making some concessions that we would not, and these are all additional conditions. These are not our standard conditions. So I think we've put in quite a bit of effort as far as guest ranches go to add and include a lot of things we've been hearing. And as far as a project, to limit all these concerns that we're hearing from the planning commission as well.
Other comments? I was also at that Chico meeting in Paradise. My comments on fire is part of the problem. I've seen a lot of commentary lately in the press and articles. There were no fire breaks. The fuel was because environmentalists won't allow. Clearing was hazardous and terrible, and there were no evac or evacuation routes suitable for that area. So that area was unique, and Maria's comments are extremely accurate, and I share her concerns. Those areas there were extremely unique. I can also go back to Mineral King. I've been going up there since 1963, 56 years, and all of you and through us know that area. That's a switchback, loop hairnets, whatever you want to call them, loop nets, all the way up, 25 miles. This is half the distance. I have not heard of any major catastrophic injuries. Maybe there were a few here and there. I haven't heard of any major fires, not that there wouldn't be. Heaven forbid, God forbid. But, so I think the magnitude of things here, if I put it in perspective, it seems like it's within the reasonable parameters of what won't, of what can happen and work properly, given that we've got several other areas like this in the state, including Mineral King, that could be catastrophic, just by the nature of where they're at and how many people live there. Far less people live here in this fork, South Fork, than live up there. Those are my comments. So, that being said, any other comments? I'm going to look for a motion to approve this project as recommended by staff. Do I have a motion? One way or the other.
I'd like to make a motion that we refer this back to staff and come to conditions that are acceptable to both sides, and I think the 15 would be a good way of going that direction. That's the motion I can make.
Through the chair. You could make that right now if that's what you, make a motion to limit to the 15. I don't know that we're going to get anywhere further with talking.
So you can do this, you can do the...
Make that as a condition.
And then just say, and the condition is it will only...
That they won't be...
It will not exceed a maximum of 15 spaces.
That you strike the ability to rent the personal residence as a short-term rental. The 15 is already there.
I see no other middle ground, so I'll make that motion, that we limit it to 15 as a condition.
What about the rental?
Strike the ability to rent to those. Those are the short-term rentals.
Right. So neither of the single-family residents on the site would be allowed to be short-term rentals under our new AA ordinance?
Okay, including...
As a condition of approval.
As a conditions of approval.
Yes.
So stated. Please.
I'll second that motion.
The yeses are three, the noes are three.
Through the chair, it appears that the, it's a tie vote, and under our policies, that would be a denial, so...
It doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass. Motion doesn't pass.
So we consider something else or whatever?
So the, there is an opportunity, if there's anything else, to reconsider that option?
Any other modifications to the motion? Revote?
Like what?
Well, Mr. Elliott had offered a condition that was amenable to him. If other commissioners disagreed with that or thought there was anything more that could be added, that could be added at this time to not have a tie vote.
Well, we've eliminated the rental.
Yeah, we've eliminated the rental.
Allowed 15 spaces.
15.
15 parking, overnight parking.
No guests.
15 guests. Also, 15 spaces if you drop off three.
But it's guests.
Right.
We would still have a cultural resources survey if we're...
So it's everything we have kind of modified to our liking.
Through the chair, one other condition that was mentioned earlier today was the elimination of the ability to have a minor modification. We could add, that wasn't part of the draft resolution. We could add that in, too, that no additions can be done to this without coming back for the...
For an application.
Did we have a couple other things? Acceptable evacuation plan? Because when I'm in a hotel or when I'm anywhere, there's, you know, here's the evacuation route, here's what you do.
We've had the fire department, look at this, we can, as a condition, require that they get together with the fire department to have a formalized plan.
And that's already required.
And, yeah, and within before any...
So let's add that as a condition.
How about low open fires?
Because there's a...
Well, it's covered in the fire season.
No, it says you can have, you can have open fires.
November through February.
Because I remember, because I mean, again, I'm going back to, I have friends in the fire service, and I'm thinking of what I heard from the chiefs, plural, at the Paradise location, and it just took one ember to blow up that whole place. Couple embers.
PG&E, they think.
Well, but that crossed the ridge. It crossed the ridge with the...
But it wasn't an open fire.
No, but point being, if you have open flame and there's wind, and this is a slight canyon area up a hill with the teepees at the bottom, and they want to do their thing, it's going to blow.
That'll happen anywhere.
Through the chair, I'd like to consider all the facts before the planning commission in the record. And again, this staff has done everything the fire department has suggested to us and everything else from testimony to condition this project in that manner. So we can't condition the project for every unforeseeable potential thing that happens out there. We would be stymied by too much analysis. And so, I mean, this, again, this is a pro-property rights county. We follow the Constitution, and when it's a use permit that gets us back to an agricultural setting with the use permit approval, then, you know, we tend not to delve into potential collateral issues that may or may not occur in the future. We need evidence of such things.
Could we add six conditions?
Again, the applicant has the right to appeal this project, too, so...
Okay. So with that understanding, the six that I would want to add, as partially already stated, no rental of the residences, and primarily because they're, otherwise, a rental would be entitled to have day guests, which is the additional traffic.
May I clarify before we get too far? On that rental, we're talking short-term rental?
Short-term rental.
We're not talking about if they want to lease it out for a year to someone or something?
No, short-term rentals. No, short-term rental of the residences, limited to 15 people. We're doing the cultural survey already, so that's not a separate condition, right? Okay? Elimination of minor modifications. Acceptable evacuation plan, meaning acceptable to county fire. And shuttle buses for guests from the dude ranch, so they don't all come in individual vehicles.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I would just clarify on that last condition. That would be a challenge to do potentially. I mean, you might have a, you're requiring them all to be in a shuttle van. You might have multiple shuttle van trips just going up just the same as a single vehicle.
Okay. Take that one off.
The shuttle's tough.
Take the shuttle off. Okay.
So short-term rental eliminated?
Short-term rental eliminated.
15 people max.
15 people.
Minor modification.
And acceptable evacuation plan.
And evac plan. You want to revote?
Well, she made a motion, so...
All right. Let's have a second to that.
Do I have to press the button?
We're going to reset that.
She made the motion.
Who made the motion? Maria. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
It's four yes and two no. The motion passes as modified with the conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, everyone. Members of the public for your comments. Moving on to item seven, director's report.
Chairman Millies, Planning Director, Aaron Bach, I'd like to thank Mr. Washam and all the people who are involved in this project. Would also want to mention the appeal process and that you have 10 days to appeal this project. So the, what we've been working on lately as far as community plans is we still continue to work on Lemon Cove, and we still continue to work on Cutler-Rosey as our two major big community plan projects. We had a general plan initiation with the, at the Board of Supervisors, and they gave us the okay at the Evanhoe Board Meeting to move forward with the initiation, which is good timing for us. Basically, we have started scopes of work for looking at vehicle miles traveled, for incorporating Sigma into our general plan. Because as we are reviewing these GSPs, there are a few issues that are coming out, and more issues will become prevalent, and I have a feeling we're going to hear a lot more news about Sigma all of a sudden within the next short few months. So we're trying to prepare our staff to address these problems. We also got an email the other day that Department of Water Resources, SWRCB, wants us to start looking at the water quality in wells throughout the county and do that at a general plan level. So there's a lot of moving steps at the state right now as far as resources that we're hoping this GPI allows us to get out, general plan amendments allow us to get out in front of. One of the other initiations was for the Delano Community Plan. So we're going to take care of both those unincorporated areas around the cities moving forward. So I think that's going to open up a lot of opportunities. As far as development projects, we're going to come forward with a 400-unit subdivision in the Neg Deck, just went out for, for Schmie Homes in Goshen. And right now, we have a few other smaller projects on the table, seven, eight-unit subdivisions in the county that the county looks forward to processing here fairly shortly. Kingsburg continues to move forward. We're looking forward to starting Phase Two on the Hash project, shouldn't call it Hash anymore, on Sound Creek Valley Homes project. Anderson, I don't even know if it's Anderson Village anymore. I think Summerland Homes Village. So moving forward on that, the city has agreed to rebuild all of Kern Street out in front of that project. So I think there's quite a bit of advantage in the future to try to co-locate these projects next to cities because I think they have the infrastructure to build it out, but not, might not have the political will in all instances to meet the governor's demands, to meet our RINA projected numbers. So the county will continue to fight that fight. SB 2, we passed the second round of qualifying our money, so we're at that final stage. And like I was saying, we'll be looking to do some good subdivision work around cities and try to fix some of the other subdivisions that haven't been so successful around cities moving forward. Mr. Washam and I attended the city council meeting for City of Tulare for the Metheny Tract, Metheny Tract item, and the city, the mayor directed the city engineer to discuss that project with the county. They've stated themselves that project had never been up at that level. It had always been at the staff level, so I think this is a good opportunity to move forward to finally getting sewer for the Metheny community. But that also, we got a grant from SGC for that community as well. So as far as pilot projects and looking how to combine some of the funding from the state to actually get big-time infrastructure improvements as far as roads, sewer, drainage, et cetera, for some of these communities, I think this will be our first real chance to be able to prove that we can do that. So there's a lot of moving parts at a long-range planning level that the county's moving through. I know you were all at the, going through the seminars this last week, and I know fire is a big, hot topic as much, and I think Sigma itself is at the state level in regards to water quality. So I think we are rushing into that fold quickly to address that in our general plan. Our local mitigation plan, hazard mitigation plan, was not that robust when it comes to adaptation or resiliency. So I think the goal here is we've, we're starting to work with OES, State OES. We have a fellow who's working with us as far as creating strategies. Those strategies aren't necessarily to be in place until our next housing element update, but we're already moving to actually get them in place now. Because I have a feeling, maybe not the big-time emergency funding being withheld if we don't have those things in place, but some of the smaller funding is going to be a little bit harder to get to. And again, when it comes to water quality and water supply, I think a lot of eyes are going to be opened when it comes to Sigma. So I think we'll, staff and the board and everybody's really looking out for these things, and I think we're trying to address them as quickly as possible and being very progressive about it.
When you said Delano, are you speaking of county line this way, or?
Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Garrett. Yeah, we want to annex Delano in, we like, like some cities, we like Walmart, you know? But, no, it's county line north, that we had, the Zananzovich family owns a lot of property out in that area, and they already made an application for a rezone, but we'd been talking to some of the other members in the family for a while, so I think there's an opportunity to add about 600 acres of developable land, and they have joint powers authority agreements already in that area that we could expand. And I know, talking to our supervisors, there's interest on the mayor's part of seeing what they could do in that area as well, so while the, while everything's hot and in motion, let's move forward on it.
So that would be closer to the Ridge Grove area?
Delano itself, it'll go in all directions, kind of same, like a big box. That's what we want, big box, anyway.
Is this Redwood Ranch they talk about, is that not in compliance with our code?
That's, not, right now, it's completely in compliance with the code, with the temporary permits we've issued on it. We haven't had any complaints since we issued the temporary permit for the events they're having. But they're out, they were out of compliance because they had not come in for any permits. So that's an assemblage of persons, et cetera, use permit that they're in process of getting. Again, when it comes to noise and some of these other things, our county ordinance is a little bit silent too. When we can get our police powers on these things through the quasi-judicial use permit process, then our ability to enforce goes up quite a bit. So I know Mr. Elliott asked me a question when I first started here. How do you get people into, come into conformance, get them into permits? Again, once they're into permits, then we can get them into building permits. But until that moment in time, enforcement is a little bit tough on the staffing side, but also on the policing sheriff's side, so...
Well, is Redwood Ranch, though, I mean, they have the Airbnb thing going on, the short-term rental, and they're also having weddings there. Is that going to, is that going to be a push comes to shove on that?
Well, again, I think what we witnessed for this smaller project was just trying to set the tone for that other project, so you'll hear a lot more testimony, you are well aware of it, so. But as I said, right now, they have a temporary permit, so they're in compliance.
Something I just thought about on the one we just did is probably no simultaneous Airbnb or short-term rental as the other one, and that probably would have been an alternative that can be brought up.
But that still would have potentially doubled the number of people, because they can have guests.
But if you, if it's not simultaneous, then you're not going to have that, you're not going to exceed fifteen.
Well, the ordinance too prohibits having events on the short-term rental property, so...
So what ordinance is that? The proposed ordinance.
No, I just was mentioning that in case you get together with them before going to supervisors is, maybe when they go to the supervisors, they propose no simultaneous use as far as the applicant. That way, they still get to use their Airbnb, but not at the same time as they're renting out the tents.
Well, when you have one house, though, you can, you have your overnight guests, but you can also have your day guests, so essentially you have twelve more people.
Not at the same time as the other fifteen.
Two hundred more.
So you mean not simultaneous to having the dude ranch people?
Yeah.
Right, and so, I mean, that was kind of the suggestion Mr. Washam had put out there, but, you know, I...
So the fact, in the wintertime, say, they might not be using the teepees and using those facilities, maybe they'd be renting the house. But I think it is what it is, that would be a good idea if it, hopefully it won't, but if it goes to appeal, those ideas can come up during that time.
Because they still have the cabin, yeah, no, my, one of the, is it our time, or are we stealing your time?
No, can steal it.
Okay. One of the things that I would like, because we're doing, we're doing a lot of catch-up seeing like the tail end of whatever processes these are, especially with this last one. I mean, it was kind of, it was a bruising process, but necessary. But as much as possible, I'd like to see, and maybe I'm waving a wand and hoping this is going to happen, but that our ordinance has taken into account differences in terrain and conditions, because it's not, and I don't know if they do, and I'm misunderstanding, but based on this last discussion about this major decision that we just made, I think there needs to be differences, because...
There are differences.
Yeah, there are definitely differences, the AF zone versus the AE zone. As far as if it was, it would have been nice if it was PDFM zone, because then all the other PDFM zone requirements would have kicked in. Again, those would not have altered, under our zoning code, what this is or what this cannot be, you know? So the FGMP allowed us to have this discussion about setbacks, so that's foothills, that's not RVLP. RVLP does not have those requirements. So if you break our general plan down simply, it's RVLP, FGMP, and mountains, you know? So these, FGMP was under a different standard, and we took considerations into this project that we've never taken before into a guest ranch.
But I, but I mean, like, we just, I mean, saw pictures and heard discussions about this being a very narrow road, and the difference between that, and, you know, I've driven to Big Bear before, would go, you know, ski country, you have two lanes and more, so there's differences there. It's mountain, yes, but...
But this road isn't any different than the Menro King Road I talked about. It's actually worse on the Menro King Road in some places.
Yeah.
And people just know, I mean, they're out of town, people come there all the time. They spend the summers up there, and there's cabins up there, and nobody, I've never, I have not heard of a catastrophic accident on that road for years.
Boy, that Menro King.
Menro King Road.
No, they, they actually happen all the time.
Wow, but they're just little bumpers.
And I've been up there, I've been up there during the fire where you can't leave, you just have to stay in place and wait till you, the fire's...
Again, and that's a problem for everybody, so you have to weigh that to some degree, but it's not something that is addressed in our codes, and we're talking about our codes. So the other aspect, though, is the interest. You're not going to have those type of interests in Goshen or Early Martyr, you know? So we, that was all considered part of our analysis in the staff report and everything else I went before you. Did you have anything else, Mike? Sorry.
No, I'm just going to...
He's resting.
So procedural question, sorry, I won't take more than like thirty seconds, but one of the conditions for this last decision was an acceptable evacuation plan, so does that mean they have to present, that should mean they have to present it before they can get this?
Well, you, the condition was the acceptable to the fire department, we'll coordinate that to happen.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'd just like to commend our staff, they do an outstanding job, and I take it personal when someone says that you aren't. Mike Washam came to our planning commissioners' meeting in Chico and explained what the duties of a planning commissioner are.
Through the chair, the director has finished the director's report, so gone to planning commission.
You're doing a great job, so, and so is Mike Washam, so keep, you're not done yet, keep on.
Are you still talking?
We do appreciate you, I mean, I personally may not always agree with everything, but I certainly appreciate the difficulty of what you're doing, and I appreciate working with you.
We appreciate that you appreciate our work.
Okay.
No, it's a process.
Yeah.
And we do, we work hard to protect the rights of an applicant, property rights, we're, like Aaron has said, that we're, you know, we're First Amendment, we're a constitutional-based property rights type of thing, within reason, and we have to accommodate for those. The thing is, when we get to your level, this has already gone through normally a project review committee, we've already addressed a lot of these issues, and a lot of times, the ones that we say there's just no way, we recommend them not to go forward. So you're seeing, you know, we filter through and sift through a lot of these. Although, that said, an applicant has the right to come forward with an application and proceed. We'll make our recommendations that we won't necessarily recommend what you're asking for, or we might recommend something less than what you're asking for, but we have a duty to process it in a fair, fair and equitable way. So we try to do our best, we work with people that may be opposed of a project or supportive, and we try to work together, and we try to, try to hash those things out the best we can, so you can make an informed decision. And when you add a condition on the end, that's not a, that's not a hit to us at all. I mean, we appreciate that your thoughtfulness. The only concern is at some points, you have to, you can't be arbitrary or capricious when you're making these decisions, they have to be based on some fact and some findings to be able to limit someone's ability to do something, there has to be some basis.
Yeah, as Aaron said, you can't, you can't make accommodation for every item in the world in a motion, I mean...
I was, I was looking at the dry brush in those pictures going along the edge of that road, and I'm just thinking, you know, this whole speech we heard on Friday, Saturday.
Oh, you're absolutely right. I spent this morning looking at Simi Valley, and they're trying to protect the Ronald Reagan Museum. You know, the fire spreads, and that's just a grassland fire, basically. But, you know, the conditions are there, but unfortunately, it's statewide, unless you're coming in with the saying, you know, up that canyon, or up many of those canyons, there's lots of commercial residential short-term rentals with multiple people up there, four or five-bedroom house, you know, they've got fifteen or fifteen people up there and all the time, and numerous houses, so it's not like there's not a lot of people up there.
So the applicant has a right to appeal this if they don't like the conditions, but can the opposition appeal too?
Yes, anybody can appeal. You can appeal anything, you guys could go appeal.
If you wanted to appeal something, you would appeal it through the planning director, and then we would appeal it to the board.
I mean, but that's only if we wanted to, but if we don't want to, we just...
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know, Clint's tenure here, if the planning commissioner or the planning director ever appealed.
Are we going to talk about his presentation, or no, later?
It was fine, we can do it later, but it was good.
All right. Wouldn't be a bad idea to do the presentation you did in Chico on the process...
I don't want to listen to it.
...to the Board of Supervisors, because I have, I have a feeling they don't have a clue. And I'm going on record.
We can, we can offer.
No, it's an excellent, it's an excellent presentation. Very informative.
Thank you.
Any more director's report items?
We took Aaron's time.
Mr. Garrett.
I already gave my time to you.
Thank you.
Item eight, planning commission discussion items, and request for future agenda items. Anybody?
I would just like to suggest that even though, I mean, there's certainly a lot of experience on this commission, except for me, I'm the newest one sitting up here right now, that we get more regular training along the lines of what Mr. Washam provided. I mean, I don't know if it's possible to get into thematic training, like case studies without dealing with actual items and breaking the Brown Act. That, I think, would be very helpful to understanding a lot more.
I think County Council has successfully trained planning commissioners in the past, and I think they've always been open to assist in trainings.
Yay!
You had some a few years ago over at the, what was the Holiday Inn, remember?
Well, that was the...
Subdivision map act training.
And we had at the Monterey County Planning Commissioners Conference several years ago.
We had one.
They did a role play, a number of the commissioners from other counties did, they did a what-if, they kind of sat up there and said, well, this is what happened, this is what happened. So then they kind of role-played. One person took the, you know, the opposition, one person was supportive, and they went through that whole role-play thing. It worked out, it was pretty good.
Maria, if you get the book on planning, from curtain...
So we heard, we heard Brown Act, is that correct?
Firearms.
Mr. Clinton has asked...
We're going to need one to go back home today.
So the suggestion was Brown Act training, was that?
No, to not violate the Brown Act, because if, let's say, three of us or more got together...
Oh, who goes to train?
Yeah, I wouldn't want it...
Let's start with Brown Act training, you know, but...
Yeah, I mean, that, that might be a good refresher. I'm pretty familiar with that from the city level, but there's probably a few things, maybe we can put together an agenda of what would be helpful, and you talk back and forth? Or you can tell us, and we can say yay, or whatever?
Want to come back to next planning commission and hear some of your ideas of what kind of trainings you'd like?
Okay.
Okay, if there are no other comments, we're going to be adjourned again on November 6th, 2019, at nine o'clock here. I think, is that the only meeting in November?
No, we have a November 20th as well.
We have, we have two, okay.
Short-term rental on the six.
So we will be back here on November 6th, 2019, at nine AM. This meeting is adjourned.